Good evening, I will call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is pledge of allegiance. I'd ask if you'd stand if you're able and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to make a comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one. We're going to do students showcase tonight and we're very, very excited to talk about the unified basketball team at the high school. I had the opportunity to see them play in their first home game and it was amazing and they were fantastic and they are currently undefeated. So, I'm going to ask the team if they'd like to join us onstage. We're going to take a couple of pictures and go from there. Okay? Thank you. I'd ask any of the parents if they want to join us onstage for a picture too. Come on up. Come on up, parents.
Parents.
Come on guys, get your parents together.
Come on, come on. Come on, Dad.
Yes. Come on.
Oh, my dad.
Yeah.
Get tighter.
Let's not get tighter.
Yeah. It's squeezing everybody.
Are you trying to find a better husband?
No, I'm just trying to squeeze in. I don't think we're going to be...
Can we squeeze in more, my friend there?
Are we good?
Thank you, guys. All right. Mr. Dizel is one of the coaches of the team. Just to say a few words about his undefeated team.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. It's my sincere honor to be here. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I'm smiling ear to ear as I did all season in celebration of this team and their accomplishments. And I really want to give so much credit to Ryan Silvia, R A D., and Paul Branigan and Jen Healy for bringing this program to Middleborough. Previously, we had not had a unified basketball team. I think we were limited to Bocce. And what growth and what an opportunity for all students to be included in an athletic event, a varsity level athletic event such as this. The competition, the camaraderie, the friendships, the connections that I know that I made with, you know, these are great students. And I don't get to spend my time with these great students all the time. So, it's a pleasure of mine to reconnect with the athletic piece, with these great students. And I've got Dean here. Dean, raise your hand, say hi. You've got Dino, Evan Adelman, Owen McCarthy, of course, you know. Owen, give it up for Owen. You've got Blake, Cara McManus, Dan Batello. Where's Shane? Where's Shano? Shano's in the back. Am I not, I'm not missing anybody, am I? Okay. I do want to read the rest of the names of the roster, the players that couldn't be here tonight unfortunately. Let's see, Shane. Kevin Heading could not join us. Daniel Jackson and Josh Stanbrook and Sean Atroki could not join us. Yes, Sean Atroki. I'd like to also publicly thank Jason Carroll, our head coach, for doing an amazing job this season. Ash Barron, a guidance counselor at the high school, did an amazing job. Jen Healy. Andrew Porter, an E S P at the high school, did an amazing job. And of course, Kelsey Adelman, as always, is spectacular. Yeah, you know Kelsey. So, a great time was had by all. Last on the list of accomplishments is going undefeated, which is pretty cool. And our season culminated just a few days ago at the end of season jamboree. And there were, I believe, six or eight teams in total that were there being celebrated. And it was an amazing event and an amazing season and I cannot wait for next season. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dizel. Does any, before you go, Mr. Dizel, does anyone have any questions? I just want to make sure. Other than, I had the opportunity to go to the first home game. It was fantastic. I can only stay for the first half because I had to go watch soccer in the second half, but it was fantastic. I can't thank the students enough who are there. I saw pictures of other games, which maybe wasn't so populated when we went on the road, but the games at Middleborough were packed and it was fun.
Yeah, they were packed and I think that's great to note, Mr. Young. We didn't go into another gym that has as many fans as we had, as much spirit as we had, the cheerleaders. Some had cheerleaders, but not the spirit. And the numbers of fans that we had from top to bottom in both of our home games. I hope that we can have more home games next year. Pack the stands, get the band involved and keep on rolling, having some fun, getting better and including all students, which is what it's all about.
Now, your team, does it, for the most part, all come back next year?
Oh, we're all returning, Rich. Squad up.
Outstanding.
We're going for back-to-back, back-to-back undefeated regular season next year, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dizel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. And again, thank you, everybody. Next up is our discussion items and the first item is from Mr. McCarthy. Hey, oh.
Congratulations to the Speech and Theater Workshop for their excellent performance of Our Town on Friday and Saturday nights to large crowds. Congratulations to all the fall sports teams for great seasons. And the Fall Sports Banquet is December 5th from 6:30 to 8:00. It's open to everyone to celebrate the great seasons. The same night is the annual Eat to Heat at the high school in the cafeteria. It's $10 for a ticket to, for a dinner to support paying for heat for those who may need it during this cold winter. The Second Annual Twenty-First Century Learning Conference was held last Friday with the theme "The Amazing Race." Like last year, it was a fun and productive day focused on life after high school. Thank you to Mr. Breen as well for coordinating the Remembering Our Heroes segment of the day focused on remembering Wayne Karen and Patrick Regan, two recipients of the Most Honorable Medal of Honor from Middleborough. Quarter Two started this week after midterms last week. And this week is a spirit week and tomorrow's Black and Orange Day. And the abbreviated week next week is also a spirit week. The spirit banners displaying all the clubs around the school are due tomorrow. And gym decorating takes place next Monday with the Powderpuff game and the bonfire following. Tuesday is the Thanksgiving pep rally and then Thursday is the Thanksgiving football game at Carver High School at 10:00 a.m. to finish out the season. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Any questions for Owen? Thank you very much, Owen. We appreciate everything. Next up, any school community members have anything they'd like to bring out? Mr. Chivonon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity last night to hit the high school for the financial aid night, which was a great opportunity to, my son's a junior, but to start thinking about it now and you really kind of have to think about it even before now for juniors going to their senior year. And it was a great night. There was a gentleman from AAA, which I didn't realize that was a service as a AAA member they offered to us is that kind of assistance and whether it's filling out the financial aid form or the CSS form depending on the school that you're going to, giving you some advice and there was some good information last night there. I think that it was a great event. I didn't realize that they now start at October 1st filling out those forms. And even though the due date is March, you can start early and start early and make sure you get everything in, which is a great piece. But that financial aid net was great and I'm glad they had that. I hope they have more in the future and maybe even gear it down, maybe even to some of the sophomores in the spring for parents to start thinking about it. Be food for thought. The other item I was looking at was our first batch of ninth graders next year coming in after three years of using a Google Chrome device. And something to think about moving forward is these students have been using Google Chrome, Google Chrome, Google Chrome for the last three years in their hands every day and some even at home are using them. So, the question is, are these freshmen going to get Windows-based laptops next year and if, or should we be thinking about that as we move forward? And the other thing is, are our teachers ready for all the, some of us are, we know that. Mr. Catino, he's Google everything, but I appreciate it because I like it. But are all of them ready? So, that's just food for thought to think about moving forward. And since I had some of the administration in the room, I wanted to think, kind of throw that out there and think about it.
Anything else, anybody? I do want to thank the community, packed voting last week and so everyone did a fantastic job. So, thank you for coming out to voting. And again, a nice observance for the veterans on Veterans Day. So, we thank everybody for that. Next up is Mr. Catino. Mr. Catino, how are you tonight?
I really don't have very much. Thanks for, you know, appreciating the fact that I've gone all digital in my classrooms. I'm not sure how much my students like it as much, but, well, you know, it is the wave of the future, so they need to get used to it. They're going to head off to college. Half of their courses are going to have an online, more than half will now have an online component, so they just kind of need to keep track of that. For myself, on a personal note, I had my test results from all, from my latest round of chemo. I have no cancer left in anywhere. Glad about that. Still have, still have to get treatments with the immunotherapy, but it's nice to get that news. And they did a brain scan too, so I do have a brain and there's no tumor, and there's no tumors in it. That's the important part, so that's my, what's going on right now, so. All right? Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Catino? I did want to mention, I mentioned to Mr. Catino that he had come to the last meeting and asked us to put on the agenda. I had gone to a workshop at the resolution, so I was waiting for a couple of pieces, so it will be on the next agenda for everybody.
So, it'll be on the 29th then?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So, we'll have it all set for the 29th.
I'll be back again then too.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Catino. Next up on our agenda is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. I want to start tonight by going a little bit off the agenda to talk a little bit about some situations we've been having here up at the Nichols with regard to fire safety. As you may or may not know, I know the school committee knows and I know Nichols Middle School parents know, but in general, to that public, we had a couple of incidents last week with a couple of students bringing lighters to school, pulling off pieces of paper towel, lighting them, stomping them out on the ground. No alarms went off. But we brought it to the attention of the Middleborough Fire Department immediately, Middleborough Police Department. We worked with them very closely to develop grade-level assemblies, which happened today with regard to fire safety and fire prevention and what happens when we do have fires. And I believe it was a strong response from the school. It was appropriate response from the school led by Mr. Greg Thomas. Carolyn Lyons was also involved, working with him, our P P S director. He did send the communication home immediately or that day to Nichols Middle School parents and I'd like to share that with the general committee if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. This was a communication out to parents. And it said, "Good afternoon, this is Greg Thomas, interim principal, John T. Nichols, Jr., Middle School. I'm calling to inform you of two incidents of concern regarding fire safety that happened at the school. We had a few boys that brought lighters to school, lit some paper towels on fire in the bathroom and immediately stomped them out. The fire was so minimal that it, no alarms were sounded and at no time was any other student in danger in the building. Nonetheless, these acts are a violation of the student code of conduct where it expressly prohibits incendiary devices at school. Please reinforce at home that lighters are not allowed in school and are illegal for students to possess. The students responsible for the acts have been identified, disciplined, accord, in accordance with our handbook, the Middleborough Public Schools worked in collaboration with the Middleborough Police Department, Fire Department, and will continue to work together going forward..." Let me just make sure, I lost my place, it's very small typing. "...going forward. In response to these acts, the school, in conjunction with the Fire Department, will mandate school-wide fire assemblies in the coming week. These assemblies are designed to impart fire safety knowledge, responsibility, and ownership for all students. As a school, we are charged to ensure our students are entering into a safe place to learn each and every day. These assemblies will serve as reminders to our students of the importance of fire safety in and out of the classroom. Thank you for your time. Please enjoy the long weekend that was sent out last Friday." So, I just wanted to share with the community in general that this did occur, that as soon as it occurred, we involved the police and fire, we notified parents and students were disciplined in accordance with the handbook. Cannot discuss that discipline. It's a confidential matter with regard to state and federal laws that govern that. So, other than that, I just wanted to get that word out that this did occur and that I feel it was a strong and appropriate response on the part of the school administration and the school department. So, any questions from the school committee, I'd be glad to.
I think I thank you, thank you for all the people who got, gone on it quickly, got out there, got the information in front of it. I think that that was the important piece. We knew about it before kids got home, which was, that's the best part of that when you get it out there. I'm looking at Mr. Thomas in the room. Thank you for getting out there in front of this and to have, the assemblies have already occurred in less than a week. That's called action and what can you ask for?
And the Middleborough Fire Department, Middleborough Police Department, we also had assistance from the state, at the state level with folks coming together, the district attorney's office, center and assistant here. And I did receive a note from a sixth-grade teacher who was overwhelmed by the assemblies today and just felt they were very strong and felt that they were very appropriate for middle school and for students and so we thank her for that too. That was just a nice message that we, that confirms maybe what we did. Unfortunately, we could not prevent that on that day, but we have to deal with it positively working towards the future. And I think, like I said, I think it was an appropriate response and a strong response on the part of the school administration, so. Okay? Any, there's no other questions? I'll move on. Twenty-First Century Learning Conference happened last Friday at the high school. Mr. Paul Branigan is going to come down and share a little bit of a story of it and also a video, a three-minute video with you, if we can indulge you. And it's the Second Annual Twenty-First Century Learning Conference, so. And I know that Mr. Sean Siciliano's here also, that he also did a lot of work for this. Mr. Branigan, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. We're really excited to share with you the highlights of the Twenty-First Century Learning Conference that was held at the high school on Friday. It's our second annual and the theme this year was "The Amazing Race" that was developed by the faculty in a think tank of really what did we want to make sure that our students knew this year? And the ideal behind the Twenty-First Century Learning Conference is to be able to engage students in a professional conference like you or I may go to where they're selecting workshops that are in interest to them, from our alumni to our faculty to community members. We have a great group of people that came forward to present workshops and they submitted their workshops online. We vetted them and then put them into an online program called SCED, thanks to Sean Siciliano. And on the 5th of November, the kids went into their laptops and chose the workshops of their choice. And we had everything from the official photographer for the New England Patriots to a weatherman from Channel 10, to faculty members talking about their amazing races in life, to you name it, we had it. And it was really just a wonderful day for students. And I wanted to share with you a little bit of the highlights of that so you can get a flavor of really what it was, but also the students' reactions to it as well. And I thank you to Middleborough Educational Television for putting this together.
After a long week of midterm exams, the students at Middleborough High School gathered together for the Second Annual Twenty-First Century Learning Conference where presenters came in and hosted their own workshops to give students an opportunity to get information on different areas of study in the 21st century. People from the community and teachers of the Middleborough Public School System came to show us all different kinds of different skills that students could potentially study in college and pursue as a career or just to do as a hobby. M U T spoke with Ms. Lori Davis, an English teacher here at Middleborough High about the importance of the conference for future of M H S students.
I think a lot of the workshops that were being taught are things that kids need to know in order to get by in the world rather than throw them out into a society that basically tells them they have to learn it on their own. We're trying to give them a little heads up on, you know, things they haven't maybe thought about or things we don't get time to do in the regular curriculum.
Patrick Brady, a Middleborough alum, hosted a workshop on careers in commercial real estate. Brady wishes that he had a similar opportunity during his time at the school.
Definitely, definitely. I mean, we had a lot of student council conferences, so it's not like I wasn't, you know, out and meeting different walks of life, but something like this, you know, could have benefited me that much more. But I'd say I ended up okay, so, you know, thanks to all the teachers and the village that it took to raise me.
Fellow alum Brendan Cahoon spoke with M U T about how those beyond their high school careers are benefiting from the conference.
You know, I think it's great. I think this is something that, you know, other offshoots and ways for, I think, us to network as alumni with current students is awesome and any further avenues we can explore there. I think there's a body of people that would be interested in getting involved.
When talking about what students had to learn from the day, M B C Ten Boston's meteorologist, Michael Page, had this to say.
Hopefully that they can realize what they're learning in high school actually does have applications, whether it's learning to communicate effectively or the science, because a lot of the calculus and physics that I did in high school, while I hated it, was very helpful to me in college and that got me a job where I wanted to work.
Those students were able to attend all the optional workshops throughout the day. The standout event of the conference was the Remembering Our Heroes presentation. All students got a chance to honor veterans of Middleborough right before the Veterans Day weekend. All eyes were on Wayne M. Karen, whose name lives on in M H S in our auditorium dedicated to the sacrifices he made to ensure our freedom. Dr. Susan Miller, a former history teacher at Middleborough, shared Karen's senior quote that truly encapsulated the character of the man we honor to this day.
He said, "Everyone, everyone is important." So, I think Wayne Karen would be the first to look at all of us on this Veterans Day weekend and say, "For all of you who have members of your family or veterans or their families, for those in the world that you know, let's serve. Let us take time, pause, and we thank them."
M H S students certainly learned a lot from the Twenty-First Century Learning Conference. Here's a few sachems on what they pulled from their experience.
It's just kind of nice to get, help us learn about, like, how to survive once we get out of high school or once we're out of college. It's basically preparing us for the real world.
I think this conference is important because it teaches us more about life skills and what you'll do when you're older and outside of high school instead of learning about math and science. And it's kind of a good day to relax and do things that interest you.
I think I can benefit from today by just taking in all the lessons that I learned and taking all the activities that I learned today because everything I learned is going to be like used in my future.
Today has been a full day learning all sorts of different skills that are useful in the 21st century. This has been Kaylee Tobin with M U T News.
So, just one of the highlights, if I may, is just that we had Raham Ford and Mr. Jeffrey Lees collaborate with us and working with a bank and also an insurance company, their representatives came in as well and they brought in a, some of the new cars from the dealership, so a Mustang and a truck and I think like a Ford Escort or Ford Focus or something. And the students had a whole lesson in regards of how to buy a car, but then the bank came in and the insurance company came in. And so, of course, all the students were like, "I want the Mustang," but it became really the life lesson of, "We all want the Mustang, but potentially sometimes you've got to get the Ford Focus." And then they had the ability to go outside and go into the cars because they were new and to be able to experience that and how to read the stickers on the cars and all of that. So, it was just one of the many community partners and a heartfelt thanks to all of them and to the faculty who came together to really either collaborate with community partners or to put together a workshop of their own. And it just, that's what made the whole day a complete success. So, thank you to all involved and especially to Sean for his outstanding ability with technology to be able to build the whole backside of that online program so students could go in and choose their workshops. So, thank you.
Any questions? Raham, Twenty-First Century. Please.
I did see in the video, I didn't know if that said, "Driving in another country" or different parts of the country, but either way, it was a kind of an interesting piece I saw because driving in other parts of this country is, can be crazy, but driving in Europe, getting an automatic if you're lucky and not going 100 miles an hour on the highway, which they go 100 and something miles an hour, it's insane. So, I thought it was kind of funny, but something that you don't even think about because if you're in this little microcosm of Middleborough, you don't get that chance. So, this was a great day. I know I got feedback, great positive feedback on that day. It was, and it was a good way to end the week. So, thank you for doing this. Thank everyone who's involved with it, doing it.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on now to Middleborough High School. It's that time of year, Middleborough High School class of 2019, schedule of final activities. Mr. Branigan.
Each year we come before you with the draft of the final activities for the senior class. And although it's only November, that before you know it, we will be celebrating their graduation. And before that, we can share this formally with the senior families in a mailing that I will send upon your approval, I want to make sure you had an opportunity to take a look at the upcoming schedule and to give any feedback or questions. You'll notice that the week going into Memorial Day weekend, it would be starting with our exam period for the senior class. Over a three-day period, we will engage the seniors in final exams or final projects of some kind. The Friday before that is our senior night, which is really just a bonding night for the senior class. It's run by the senior officers and advisors and that usually is an event that's held in the gym. It's kind of a memory night that we provide for the students with pizza, ice cream, sundaes and a trip down memory lane. It's amazing how they can find their Berkland videos and the middle school yearbooks and things for them to go back through time of their history together. That following Thursday is the senior barbecue upon their last exams. We do our beginning of the senior class meetings with all of the beginnings of their senior week experience and that's also the target date of May 23rd for the yearbook distribution. The 24th is always a no-school day for the senior class unless they have requirements they still need to fulfill that day. It also becomes the grading day for the faculty and the processing day of all the final grades for the senior class. It's also a half-day of school, mind you, for the entire school community, which is why that day has always been a no-school day for the seniors. The 28th, it starts the week towards graduation, starting with the senior breakfast, graduation rehearsal, and of course, the senior prom, which is being held at the River Club in Situate from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. Wednesday, the 29th, will be the scholarship night at 6:00 p.m., which is an invitation-only event and that I'll be coming before you after the holidays for the approval of the 2019 scholarship booklet. Thursday, the 30th, is our senior last assembly, which I'll be informing all of you with a formal invitation if your schedule allows. And then on Friday, June 1st, which I know is a community favorite, is the senior walk that will be taking place at approximately 10:30, where the senior class will board buses at the high school in their caps and gowns for their last time around the district, starting at the MECC, moving to the complex, going in through the MKG, leaving through the Berkland, arriving at the Nichols and finishing back at the high school for the last time. And then, of course, graduation will be held on Saturday, June 1st at 10:30 a.m. in the high school gym.
The previous one was a typo.
Oh. Oh, that would be, you can't do it all in the same day, can you?
Sorry.
Thank you. I will fix that. I appreciate that, Mr. Genovone. And so, with your approval, once we make that correction, we would be preparing a mailing that would go out right after the Thanksgiving holiday for the senior families so they can begin their planning as well.
Motion to approve. Other than the chair, there's not one to talk about this at this time. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, genere.
Thank you. Thanks for catching that error.
Okay, next on our agenda is an MCAS update and I would invite our administrative team to come on down. As promised, back in October, I said that we were going to form data teams and begin the process of a complete and complex analysis of data and we've done that, we've begun to do that and we're at the point where we're ready to report out on results and we did it with what's called sort of a SWOT analysis, where we look at our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities for growth and what might inhibit that in our school district. So, that's sort of the format we're using. We have a nice presentation for you over your shoulders and we're going to begin, I believe, with the HBV school, correct, Mr. Thompson?
I think we are.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. Good evening. All right, so we each have a couple slides here that we're going to go through, which is areas of strength, opportunities for growth, and next steps. So we've all, we've been meeting as a district team and our data team, breaking down some of this data in each building, has been doing the same. So we've been poring over the data quite a bit. So at HBV, some of our strengths, really one of the big things has been our growth over time. As you can see up there, just year to year, from last year to this year, we had some pretty solid growth in our achievement percentiles, which was great. This year, one of the things I have done with my staff is really go back to the beginning, the end of my first year, 2013, I'm in my seventh year here, to really take a look at how far we really have come. That isn't something I've done a lot with my staff. I'm not going to go over all the details, but I did want to share a few things that I've been sharing with my staff. In our achievement percentile, it's a little different now because it's compared all the way through eighth grade, but we were given achievement percentiles back then as well. And so in ELA, when I had first started, we were in the 26th percentile, and as you can see up there, we're in the 43rd percentile this year in math. When I first started, we were in the 19th percentile in the state. In this past year, we're in the 60th percentile in the state, which was great, something I think and hope my staff are proud of. More importantly is our subgroup performance, which has been really strong. It's what made us a Level III school. Prior to is our performance with high needs students and special ed students. When I first started, our special ed in ELA was in the 13th percentile in the state. We're in the 40th this past year. Our high needs was in the 14th percentile and we were in the 47th this past year in ELA. And then in math, the gains have been even more dramatic. We were in the 7th percentile in the state for our sped students in math when I first started. We're in the 51st percentile this last year, and we were in the 8th percentile for our high needs students. And we're in the 62nd percentile this year for our high need students in math. So our growth over time, it's been slow and steady. I've been asking my teachers every year to just be patient, you know, it's, the gains aren't, you know, everyone wants to see it all overnight. It doesn't happen that way. It's incremental, just steady, consistent. But now, with a number of years behind us, it's nice to take a look back and pause and reflect how far we've come. So in breaking down our data a little bit closer, looking at the standards, a couple things to celebrate, that really was our math standards, which were above the state average in almost every category. We had some areas in fifth grade, but by and large, we were above the state average pretty consistently, especially in grades three and four. And then reading was a real strength as well. Comprehension and close reading skills, all the standards relating to kids pulling details out of the text to support their answer, context clues to understand unfamiliar words, things like that. Even some of the standards where the state didn't do well and we did really well in, which was nice. So a lot of the work that we've been doing with the literacy collaborative has really been paying off, especially in reading. Some of our opportunities for growth, on our accountability chart, we didn't meet our growth targets, so I think that's really why we were partially meeting targets in my school. I know that's a little confusing to look at, but our target wasn't set off our own past performance. We did improve in areas, as I showed you before, but our target was just 50. That was set for everybody, all schools in the state, so I anticipate that being different next year. The other thing that was a little different for us last year is we could have done better with our lowest performing subgroup. We traditionally have, so that's something that we're really locked in and focused on this year again. We, for those of you that have heard me come here before, we've done a lot since I've started here in looking at data, targeting kids that are struggling, working with them in our Walk to Learn block. We have a set of time committed in the morning where we do that. We took our foot off the gas a little bit and did things a little bit differently last year because it was the first year where teachers were implementing the literacy collaborative and we were trying to allow a little bit of space for teachers to do that. And I don't think that helped us out too much, so we're really locked back into doing what we were doing before to make sure that we're moving those kids along. Writing has always been a challenge for us. It's been an area of growth. We have improved year over year, but it's still presenting itself as the area in literacy that we need to focus on most, especially thinking about it. We talk about narrative opinion writing, informational writing, but test writing is a genre in and of itself within writing. We, you know, they give us standards and say they were testing narrative, but, you know, they're given a prompt, they have to respond to a very specific question, they have to pull details from a text. That is a different writing genre, so I'll get into that in a minute. Computer access and typing also is something we're still working on in regards to writing. So, and then some of the standards in fifth grade definitely show that we still have work to do to make sure kids have that solid conceptual understanding with the math that they're doing. Kids start being introduced to decimals and fractions. Those kids that are really good students that come in and work really hard, but like wait for the teacher to show them the algorithm and they remember how to do it and they look like they really got it, if they don't have that solid conceptual understanding, that starts to fall apart a little bit in fifth grade. So some of the more complex standards we saw, a little bit of struggle there. So that's another opportunity for growth for us. And then science as well, we had no change in science. Science has been an area we need to grow. That's why we have a new program, so I'm going to get into that in the next slide. But then also, I put up there differentiated by teacher because some areas that we've identified as a school as being an area of struggle is not necessarily the case for every teacher on a grade level. So we've really been unpacking the data class by class and making sure that we're clear about who is actually excelling so that we can take a look at what they're doing and share that in our PLCs. So that leads me into the slide of next steps. As I said before, we've really recommitted to focusing on our lowest performing subgroup. Not that we ignored it last year, I don't want it to come across that way, but we didn't do it the same way that we had always done before. And so we learned, we needed to stick with what we've done in the past, it's worked, so we're focused on that this year. That's what progress monitoring is also about, making sure we're tracking that data, checking in with our kids, we have our groups set. We administer quick little assessments to make sure that the interventions we're doing is working and that we're showing good growth for those kids. I referenced too, that's not just school-wide and grade-level analysis of data, but actual class-by-class analysis so that we can be clear who is exceed, doing really well and who is struggling, so that we can take a look at what's working and share that. The conceptual understanding piece that I was talking about in math as being a struggle is why we adopted ST Math. It's a really cool program. It's so much fun watching the kids engaged in that. It's, that main focus of that program is to develop conceptual understanding with no language involved, so it's problem-solving. And it does get the kids to that algorithmic stage in math, but they have to show that they've demonstrated good conceptual understanding of what they're doing before that starts getting put in front of them. So it's a great program. Still working with Susan Looney in our curriculum math maps also to just make sure we're getting at what we need to. And then in writing, we are really working on breaking down that genre of test writing grades one to five. And I really do think a big piece of the work that we need to do is breaking that down in grades one and two, because part of test writing as a genre in writing is typing, and it's something that we're not doing a good enough job in in grades one and two, exposing our kids to be able to type. So we've started to unpack that a little bit and try to be a little clearer with our teachers where we want to see typing stations happening in grade one. We want to see clear prompts in their reader's response notebooks, not just kids being able to write about what they're reading about, but teachers being explicit and saying, "Tell me about the characters in the book, tell me about the setting." And then just looking at how that builds throughout the year, because I think third graders are walking in still lacking that fluency and the ability to type and express themselves. I don't think that we're getting an accurate read on our kids' actual ability to write. I'm not saying that it isn't an area that we need to focus on, it is and we are, but I think it's hard to look at where we're at because I can see kids writing, bless you, and then I see what they type and it's very different. So that's an area that we're focused on, and I put in there, one of the things we're going to do is continue to pursue avenues to increase technology. We only have five devices in each first-grade classroom and they're very old devices. So I've been talking to Mr. Lynch about that a little bit, but we're also taking a look at some of our devices around the building and thinking, trying to think creatively if there's ways that we can push more devices into the grade one and two classrooms, recognizing that it's an area that we need to focus on. And then in science, just the continued work that I've spoken about in our school improvement plan in terms of discovery of tech book and our science curriculum maps. And one big thing that we've done this year is we have updated our report card to ensure that all the new science standards are on there. So parents that are getting first-term report cards will see those standards reflected. I think that's going to go a really long way to helping make sure that we're moving in the right direction with science, so. That's all I have.
Sorry.
Sorry. So again, from Mary K. Good, the areas of strength, opportunities for growth, and next steps, I never know what one to put. So our strengths, our criteria reference target percentage at 76% met our targets. We exceeded our achievement targets in ELA and math in all subgroups, which was wonderful to see. We met our growth target in math in all subgroups. We saw strengths in ELA with character development, identifying details from a story, and our vocabulary development. In math, we saw our strengths in number sense and operations and algebraic thinking. And specifically in science, we saw our strengths in the standards of life science and in physical science. Overall, our accountability percentile was 40. We did have some great percentiles in the 60s in math. I'll hit my next one because it goes right into my next one. Our opportunities in growth really were in ELA. We took a little bit of a hit in ELA. We focused, as Mr. Thompson said, we focused a lot of our attention through Leslie last year with our creative writing, and it kind of bit us a little bit because we, again, took our eyes off of the, more responding to the, and the text that they were asking us to respond to. We were able to work with all of our grade levels, including grade one, two, all the way through. They gave us actual, the actual student typed responses in, for a sample in grade four and a sample in grade three, excuse me, grade five. It was very eye-opening to see what our students were scored on, and it really opened the eyes to grades one and two as to what the questions they were being asked and what the scored responses were. For many of our students that put a little bit more thinking and creativity in their writing did not receive full scores. Many of the students that received perfect scores in the writing, got the full seven points, basically decided right from the text. So that's something that, you know, with the text, as Mr. Thompson mentioned, the test-taking skills of writing are very different than the actual writing, you know, creatively and writing for enjoyment. And so that's something that we are developing units, a test-taking unit in grade five that we'll be also using in grade four, specifically in those areas. So ELA has become, with Leslie, it continues to be a huge opportunity for growth for us. Chronic absenteeism, our absentee rate is great. It's in 97, it fluctuates monthly between 95 and 97. Unfortunately, we did have a 2.1 decrease, which we didn't gain the two extra points, but they're two big points. It's something that, you know, we have to look at because it's the unexcused and the unexcused absences. And it's out there, we have to be aware of it at vacations and when, you know, taking students out of school. And they look at it, the state looks at it as mislearned, missed learning opportunities. So it's whether the student is sick or not. And I know that's something that school districts around Massachusetts are looking at because if a child is sick, they need to be home, or chronically sick, they need to be home. So I know that that's something at the state level that they're looking at as well. We did have a slight decline in science. It was our first year on computer-based, not an excuse, but, you know, not sure if that had a little bit of an impact. Again, having the new science standards, you know, is our first year really kind of digging deep with those. Adopting the new science textbook has made, you know, a lot of difference because it's allowed our teachers to really pinpoint exactly what they need to do. We're adding the STEAM Week, the district's adding that. That's a huge piece for us moving forward. Moving our growth in our achievement percentiles needs to happen. I mean, we're in the 20s for ELA. It's not good enough, it's not okay. So that's something that we're definitely focused on, and not only in grades three, four, five, an exercise that we, that took place at Mary K. Good was, grades one and two had not seen what was required of our students on the test, both, you know, with content as well as with technology. So we had a little exercise with grades one and two with taking it as a fifth grader, taking it as a fourth grader, and taking it as a third grader. And there was some chins on the floors in first and second grade teachers with what the expectations are for our students with technology and being able to navigate. So it was very eye-opening. Again, as I'm going to definitely piggyback on Mr. Thompson and the use of technology, especially in those grades one and two, they really need to come in and be prepared in grade three for, and I don't even, I push it even a little bit further, sorry, than just the typing. Yes, we do definitely need work with the typing, but also just the navigation, the highlighting, the strategies that we teach them, paper, pencil, to go back into the text and highlight and circle and cross out, needs to be taught with technology. How to highlight with, you know, on computers, how to use a ruler on a computer. It's very different than using a ruler, you know, on a piece of paper. So those types of things in the younger grades, the lower we can, you know, the lower grades we can start using those tools. I did a visit with Dr. Gates yesterday to Halifax, looking at some science, and this was a, was it a fourth grader or a third grade? Fourth grade, thank you, a fourth grade classroom, and they had their Chromebooks and they were measuring and navigating, and it was amazing to see, and it was coming real quick to them because they've had exposure to it. Again, essay writing, multiple, using multiple sources is an area for growth with us. We let, as I like your analogy, let our foot off the gas a little bit with that. We were really focused on that for the last few years. We kind of let up on that a little bit with the multiple sources to work on our creative writing. It bit us a little bit, so we kind of brought it back and we're using those again, and as well as our language conventions. Math, we see some areas in growth, and specifically in the standards with measurement in geometry. And in science, no surprise, it's technology and engineering. So our next steps to, we're increasing, currently increasing the number of staff receiving literacy training. Last year, it was approximately half of the staff in grades three, four, five. At the end of this school year, all of three, four, and five, and half of one and two will have their training. We have restructured our response to intervention in the morning, so that's a big difference for us. We've, the reorganization of our professional learning time. So we used to conduct our town meetings in the afternoons once a month. We've moved those to the morning, which gives me the capability for a week, every month for a week, I get to meet with the grade-level teams, teachers, and I also have my coaches, the instructional coaches there at those levels too, to discuss. We look at student work, we look, dive deep in the data, we discuss our instructional strategies, what's working, what's not working. The implementation of ST Math, I know you just heard that from Mr. Thompson, the importance of ST Math, and it's amazing. It frustrates me, I don't like it to do it, but our kids love it, so that's awesome. We've, teachers are already seeing benefits from the implementation. The increased attention to the test-taking, writing, and the technology strategies, provide opportunities for coaching and observation of best practices. That has been a huge change for us, having our coaches being in classrooms, observing, giving that feedback to teachers immediately. What are we seeing that's working? What can we, you know, seeing something in one classroom, you know, we can't get, the teachers can't get to each other's classrooms. So our coaches are able to give that feedback on the spot and saying, "Hey, I saw this going on in this particular classroom," and then coming to me and say, "Can we provide some coverage? Can we rearrange a schedule?" Which I'm very open to, so teachers can see each other and the best practices that are going on in the building has really changed the way we're looking at things. Increase our consistency with the implementing of best teaching practices while improving performance outcomes in a daily, it's a lot of words, in daily assignments and benchmarks, which is, again, the constant sharing of the common language. When we just had Leslie in the upper grades, the primary teachers, you know, were hearing all this language and, you know, they weren't involved. And now we're able to have these conversations across these grade levels, and it's really helping with our vertical alignment of what we're doing from grade one to grade five. The beginning implementation of the math workshop model in grades one and two, and that goes along with what that goes along with what Mr. Thompson said with creating our math maps with the work, this is work with Susan Looney, so we're, we're starting this in grades one and two, to really work with our students in these small groups in math to target areas that we're seeing as areas of concern as are coming up. One thing actually that I didn't put on the slide, and I do apologize, we're, I just sent it out today as a matter of fact, we're meeting with our lowest percentage, the lowest twenty percent students in grades three through five that have been identified. I will be meeting with every teacher in the next two weeks after the Thanksgiving break to, they need to, teachers will need to provide updates, progress monitoring, student work samples of those students and the progress or the lack of progress that's happened. What interventions have you done since September? What do you feel has worked? What, you know, change do you, do you feel is going to need to happen to close that gap faster? We're also identifying them through our STAR three sixty in grades one and two. So we'll be identifying those students who are the lowest twenty percent as well. The coaching model also is embedded in our special education program through our, through our coordinator, Kim Redlon, who's working with our co-teaching teachers to really pinpoint our special education areas of concern and where we need to close those achievement gaps faster with our special education students. And obviously, again, just really, you know, we are, we are really getting our pom poms and sharing for more and increasing the technology in grades one and two. We, we need to get it in their hands. You know, we do struggle with, you know, the amount of, what's the adequate amount of screen time, because we don't want to do that either. But we do need to make sure that our children are prepared for what's ahead.
On elementary, I, I was looking at that absenteeism piece, and aside from everything else, all the data that you can break apart and have to really analyze, absentee is one thing. You're either in the room or you're not in the room. And, and there's a reason why the state does it, and parents need to hear it more and more. And I just, I'm almost shocked to think that students could be absent that much that they'd be chronic.
It's eighteen days. In elementary school, it's eighteen days.
That's a lot. That's a lot of absentee. I mean, I remember two or three, you were like, oh, my God, two or three for the whole year. That's something that, from a district standpoint, we really need to make sure parents know that. It's, oh, it's only elementary, it's a day here, a day there, I'll take off three weeks early. You can't do that, because you're not in class, you're not learning, and it's not just not being there and you can get the homework, you make it up. It's really instructional, and we're talking about real things. If you, technology in hand. So I'm really, that's something absenteeism that I'd love to work on even district-wide, because it may not be chronic elsewhere, but it's still happening. And I, and I know it does.
I appreciate your support with that, because it is, you know, it is something that, you know, we need to look at, because you're right, if the students aren't sitting in those chairs in front of their instructors.
And it's almost an easy one. That's almost low hanging fruit there. Because if you're there, that you're going to get the instruction. But the other thing was that the students are expected almost to regurgitate pieces versus think. That scares me, because when we get into high school and Mr. Brannigan starts talking about the high school piece about the backwards, the backward solving techniques, if you can't think by the time you get there, you're not going to be able to do that piece. So we're trying to teach it, but it's hurting us here to help us there. It's almost like the state's working backwards on you, on this. It's something that I'm going to have to, I'm going to ask you more questions later on, because I have to think about it more, because I want to talk to somebody about it too from my, our standpoint.
I would love to, stop by Mary Kay Good, I'd love you to see the student responses, because I think it's, I don't see it as, you can disagree, I see it differently in math. I think in math, they, they are expected to be thinking more and explaining their answers. I think it's very different in math. But in ELA, we were quite surprised to see the student responses and the, and the, the points awarded. It was, it was a little eye opening for us.
Yeah, I just, I, I thought of that, because I think of, because we, we know that our ELA has everything to do with math, it's the further along you get, being able to solve problems. If you can't understand the problem, you're not going to be able to solve it. So I just, that really, ooh, I'm thinking about it, I'm like, wow, hey, you know, we, we should keep doing what we're doing, because the kids need to think. I think of that.
Thank you.
The test be whatever. And then I remember, and Greg, you were sitting here too, when I got here, some of the numbers that we used to see and what the growth is going on, it's going in the right direction. Regardless, I can see the growth. We may not be hitting what the state is, but I can see what's happening. And man, leaps and bounds, like I said earlier, you had this big, huge field, Mr. Thompson, you came in, it was a big, huge field that needed to be taken care of, like you said, the field raking it, well, raking it, sowing it and everything else. And slowly but surely, you've raked, sowed, and the teachers, everyone involved up there, down there, up there, whatever you want to call it, at the complex.
Over there.
It's, it's, it's a testament to the leadership as well as the staff there. So, and I've been seeing it grow. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Like, if people have questions about the elementary school.
Okay. Go, go ahead. Greg, go ahead.
Okay. I think this covers for both of the elementary schools. I think both of you mentioned, like, more access to technology, you know, getting kids more. What's the, what do you think are the barriers to that happening? Is it like hardware, connectivity, teacher training?
No, it's hardware. I mean, we need, yeah, we don't have enough devices for the lower grades, really. Our commitment was to, sorry, I'm going to put this down, it's going to make a loud noise. Our commitment was to get the devices in the hands of three, grades three, four, and five, because we had to take an online test and we didn't have the devices to take the test with. So we have that, we're good there. And we've added some devices in there too. But grades one and two have the old, old, old hand-me-downs, like the original tablets that are six years old, five of them in a room, that take five, ten minutes to log on, which is, you know, with a little six-year-old that can't sit still to begin with, you know, trying to get them logged on. So I think, you know, and it's something that we've been aware of, but I don't know, I think it makes sense to bring it up here and talk about it a little bit. It's a reality. I, I know for sure our kids are more capable of expressing themselves than the way we see them expressing themselves. Like I said, sitting down and typing your response is very different than writing your response. And there's no question, it's not the full answer, but that fluency in their ability to type, I sat in a fourth grade class just the other day watching the kids like point and pack, you know? And it's just, it's painful, you know?
I do have a student though in fifth grade right now that's typing eighty words a minute.
That's great.
She's the exception. Right. She is the exception.
So you're talking about devices, more devices, and then how about the infrastructure for the connectivity?
I think the infrastructure is good, that's been set for a little bit, yeah. I think we're good there.
I have a couple of things. One is on the absenteeism. I think, I think to some extent, we have to look at it differently too. We have to look at it as, in some cases, it's not parents, you know, taking days off, it's a family resource problem that people need to get help for and be able to do. So I think that's one thing. As far as the devices, I think the other thing with the devices too is, I get the moving in them into grades one and two. I would say we probably need to move them to kindergarten more too, because if we're going to start this process and, and want, we want to start them from the beginning and move them through. So I don't think, I don't think it's just a, a resource piece for one and two, it's got to be a resource piece with the kindergarten and the preschool, because that's where we start them. I, I do have a couple of questions about some things that you guys said. The first is, you talked about the lowest twenty percent that you wanted feedback from the teachers. How do we engage the parents, the lowest twenty percent, and talk to them about what options are available for them and what they can do, that kind of thing?
For us, for us, we use our parent-teacher conversations as one to engage our parents. We do, you know, our parent nights, it's, this is a tough time of year, we usually wait till after the new year, where our Title I nights, with our literacy nights and our math nights to engage our families that way. We use MegQuark and the Family Resource Center is, is a huge resource for those families as well that are, you know, may not have the resources, that may, may even extend outside of the school system that, that need, need to happen. The, you know, the PPS office is, is a huge help as well with reaching those families through, through PAC, and, and they're a great resource for us to, to get out and get that information out on what can we do for our students to increase literacy and making sure we have materials available for, for families. That's, that's a huge piece.
Yeah, really, I mean, all of the above. I think we have a spreadsheet that we list our kids that are really in like the bottom, like twenty-eight percent. And that's mainly what we do in PLC. We sit, we talk, we look at those kids, we track their growth, we want to make sure their growth is fifty or higher when we assess them. And that's, you know, all of the above, connecting with parents, working with them in the intervention block, what are we doing in the classroom? Do we know what to do? If we don't know what to do, we bring them to our larger team, our BVSD team, and sit and develop plans there. So, you know, it just depends on the kid, depends on the situation. And there's no doubt the family, you know, when we talk about attendance, we're talking about outliers. Our attendance is really good, you know, it's, it's, it's high. So we're talking about a couple of kids, and they're very interesting situations. Each one of them are very unique and different. I think our battery's going to die here.
I'm like, what just happened?
I don't know if we have power yet, but.
The other question I have, I guess the other statement I want to make too, is I recognize as we go through and talk about issues, opportunities that come up, it varies from year to year at times. So some things we may do extraordinarily well on, the next year may not. But I think, you know, we need to look at what resources we have and what programs we have. So, for example, in my mind, we have an after-school program that we know we've made a goal of superintendent to look at. We know we're going to put that out to bid. And so to me, there has to be a piece in there that there needs to be some adapting to our needs. So for example, I would say that given the data that you presented to us, that, you know, when they're doing the after-school pieces, there should be a piece focused on science, and there should be a piece focused on technology, so that they can work with, you know, they have the opportunities. Now, they can use our, our things, they can use our, our devices to help with that, but it's, it's clearly a piece that, you know, and the same thing, we had a problem with math, we could look at, at that. And I would say the same to you guys. You guys have after-school activities a lot of times that you put forth, and I'd really like to see those focused on some of the areas that we talked about. So maybe it's an opportunity for first and second graders to use devices and be a part of devices and, and have science opportunities that, you know, may not be able to happen during the regular day, just because you're sort of adjusting on the fly. So I just raised that piece.
And the Rotary Raise Program.
Yes, absolutely.
Is something that has helped out with that population that you've identified as those students who could really use an extra boost. And it's been, been very successful, it's proven very successful, so.
And we target our most struggling kids with that. And we do, we have science club going on, we have Brain Gym.
Typing, we have a typing club.
Awesome authors for the lower grades, a lot, a lot of things we are trying to target those specifically. Those are our own in-house run programs. I know you've talked about something different, but.
And I know the state's looking at this, so my question for you is this, when you look at our own students, are the students that are in that lowest performing subgroup, are they the same kids in that chronic absenteeism group?
Not necessarily.
Or is, so it's, it's random, it's not?
Yeah, not necessarily.
Okay.
And it's not that many kids in the lowest performing group. We're talking, I think it was sixty-three, I forget the exact number, sixty-some odd kids, accounting for half of our performance. So I'm, frankly, like, I'm, we've moved those kids, we've done a good job with that in the past, we know how to do it. You know, we, we tried last year to, in my building, make it easier for the teachers, and we created groups and had the kids just go to those groups. What we found though, was there was a disconnect between what was being offered to the kids and what was happening in the classroom. When the teachers create those groups, it's, it's just because they're creating them, it's connected to what's going on in the classroom and just more effective. That was the change we made last year, we tried to make it easier for teachers, trying to be helpful, but I don't think it was helpful in moving the kids. We, we still earned some points, I'm just, it's an area that we could have done better, and we have in the past, so.
And I think too, rich to your point of, you know, what are we doing that's kind of what's ours and what, you know, in our district. Leslie, the collaborative in training our coaches and having our coaches in-house, having our, you know, is incredible, you know, it's not having a consultant come in, do their magic, and then leave, you know, and then we're kind of left to, I mean, this is ongoing, every day, pretty much professional development embedded in what we do. So that's, you know, that's a huge piece for, for what we're going to want to do moving forward.
I, I did want to touch upon that. I love the fact that you're utilizing your staff that's there to really help the staff that might need that extra support. And then I just had a question about when you guys do benchmarks or assessments, are kids taking them on the computer to kind of help them with that technology piece?
Yes. The only thing they don't do is a writing benchmark online, because we use STAR three sixty, and it doesn't have a piece, so we, I know we've been, our writing benchmarks, they're writing them and then we're using Google Classroom or we're doing something to have them, you know, with the typing piece, so they get used to that, but the rest of it's online.
To Greg's point, the current devices for first and second grade are six or seven years old. How many devices do you have per classroom?
Five.
Five each? Okay. Okay, that's fine. And, okay, that's all I need to.
I pulled a cart out of fifth grade to make sure that we can rotate it through. And we got a donation at HBB that we're going to buy thirteen devices for second grade with, which is great, but, you know, still, that, what that does is it allows us to rotate that through so that once every six days or five days in second grade, they'll have a full class set and something a little bit more functional.
The two of you, and I guess, I asked Mrs. Lattender too, if you could put together, we're going to start budget soon. If you could put together on this particular piece, I'm specifically talking about kindergarten, first and second grade, what your minimum number of requests would be and sort of the max, so we can look at the two of those, because I think, I'm, I'm hearing that we'd be interested in that particular piece. I know Greg and I sit on the budget committee, so I know both of us would be interested in that piece going forward for the budget and seeing what we can do. And, and to be honest with you, whether we can fund it or, in my mind, if we can't, and I think, you know, that'll play out how the budget plays out, but I think it's reasonable that that be part of the request to the TAP. If, you know, we decide that we can't fund it internally, that I think it's reasonable to say I would prefer that be.
Yeah, completely.
Right. For the capital improvement committee, so. I just, so thank you, if you could do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always have questions?
I think so.
Can we move on to secondary?
Good evening.
Mr. Thomas, we haven't really got a chance to welcome you as principal yet. Here, this is your first time, James.
I appreciate it, thanks.
I'm sorry, last week was a little difficult, but hopefully tonight is not as difficult.
Well, it, it's different to be sitting on, on this end and a little more nerve-wracking to have to, you know, sit, be looking at all of you, but I appreciate the opportunity. This is, this has been a process for me. In the two and a half, I'm going to, how do I?
Let's try it this way.
Perfect. Awesome. So this has been a, a new process for me. And I've kind of relied on my department leads to help me kind of break down some of the data. I also should say that I have leaned on every single one of the administrators in this district for help. And I've got to say, we are very, very fortunate. We've, you know, I know you know that going in, but having worked with everyone directly in a time of panic or, or question, or the responses have been immediate and overwhelming and extensive. In particular, I've sat a lot with Derek, particularly with the MCAS piece and with Melanie. You know, Derek can make your head spin on MCAS in about, you know, five seconds, but it's, it's a good opportunity for me to, to learn and grow. So I, I do appreciate all the support I've gotten. That being said, moving forward, this is our areas of strength in ELA. We've exceeded or met the targets for achievement and growth across the board in, in, in school. For the school, as far as exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, fifty percent of the school in ELA either exceeded or met expectations, and if we factor in partially meeting expectations, that number jumps up to eighty-nine percent, which is a, a really good job and a testament to what our, our kids and, and teachers are doing. Some of our strengths are determining meaning of words and phrases from context. In sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, I think there were six questions, and of the six, we exceeded the state on, on five of those. Identifying citing claims and evidence is also a strength across the board. And there were three questions between sixth and seventh grade, and we exceeded the state and all of that as well. As far as math goes, again, in math, we are exceeding and meeting targets for achievement As far as math goes, again, in math, we are exceeding and meeting targets for achievement and growth in math, which is excellent. As far as exceeding expectations and meeting expectations, forty-six percent of the school is doing that. When you put in partially meeting, with that as well, it jumps up to ninety-one percent. Our strengths in math are statistics and probability. Statistics and probability are taught near the end of the school year, so they tend to be fresh in the mind of the students across the three grades. Hands-on activities are used and the subject matter easily lends itself to active learning. They use dice, spinners, things like that, so it makes statistics and probability a little more fun, I think, and understandable. Solving and factoring expressions is also a strength and that can be attributed to the student learning goals the teachers worked on. The concerted effort of the eighth grade brought a relatively weak area, which is functions, to one of the strongest. Seventh grade teachers focused on the standard and that standard score scored twenty-one points above the state. So, those were our strengths in, in math. As far as science and technology and engineering, a strength as far as that goes is the orthographic drawings in communication systems, that is a strength. Ms. Mieske in our STEM program for the last three years has worked with the kids specifically on that, which I think is why we're seeing positive numbers there. And the other is the inheritance of variations of traits is another strength as far as science goes. Opportunities for growth in ELA. Analyzing and using evidence from multiple sources was a general weakness across the board, as well as essay writing, particularly in the sixth grade, which was concerning because we fell below the state average in each of the essay questions. That number changed in the seventh grade, we did well in the seventh grade on essay questions. So, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure what, what that, what the reason for that is, but that's, you know, something we are certainly looking into. And the essay question we did the worst on in sixth grade had to do directly with the problem listed above, which is analyzing and using evidence from multiple sources. We fell ten points below the state on a, a question that was, had to do with, with that. And unfortunately, the state didn't release that question, so we can't really analyze what exactly we did wrong. In math. Math number sense was a problem and geometry was a problem across the board. Number sense scores are low, but they've made some gains. The elementary has implemented ST math, so we should see some support with students coming up for that. The math department is also looking for ways to wrap in practice while skill, wrap in practice skills while not having to reteach what's already been taught. Geometry is a concern across the board and when I asked why, the questions are dependent on number skills, number sense skills. So, even though a student may understand the concept, the calculation, calculation error is suspected. Geometry is also a vocabulary-heavy strand requiring specific recall, so that may also be a reason why geometry is, is a little down across the board. The department is continuing to explore ways to implement better practices for this strand, so hopefully we can, you know, we're focusing on it, we can see improvement in the coming years. The science and technology, we improved, but in looking over the last four years, we've kind of remained, I mean, we've remained stagnant, the numbers look pretty much the same. With the exception of this year, we jumped up a percentage point in our proficient in, in, in science. So, not much change, but a, a little bit better and we, we can really, the sci, science is different because you're not just being tested on, on the grade level, you're being tested six, seven and eight and it becomes tricky, you know, how do we, how do we review all that information in addition to the curriculum that's currently in place for the eighth grade, so. All right, steps for improvement, we need to continue to enhance collaborative data analysis through more common assessments administered through Edge Elastic. Dr. Gates has done a fantastic job working with our teachers, getting them on board with Edge Elastic and it just gives us more opportunities to assess our kids and analyze the data and help, you know, make, you know, better opportunities and give them, you know, give us more information on where we, we can improve and what we need to work on. We need to improve the students' practice with authentic and rigorous writing and analysis opportunities. I had an opportunity last week to go with Dr. Gates and with Mrs. LaPerriere, our department lead, we went to Brookline and really was looking at the Leslie literacy because that's what we're using in elementary school and it makes sense to consider implementing, implementing that at the middle school, so that's something we're looking at. We need to align our pedagogical approaches with literacy to that, which I just said. Pacing in math, we need to make sure that, you know, across grade, that we're, you know, on the same page and that's something we're working on. And in science, we need to embed more review of the sixth and seventh grade content throughout the eighth grade. Currently, we do gallery walkthroughs and things like that, but it's something we really need to focus on in order to move and improve that. Other things that I need, wanna consider as far as making improvements is with more time and this doesn't happen immediately, but we need to install a more formalized RTI program. We right now have a relationship with Oak Point where some of our struggling learners are staying after school and working with our community members at Oak Point and they're, they're ranging from former teachers to professors at MIT that are coming in, lending their time and experience and developing relationships with kids, which I think is awesome. We're working on developing school culture. One of the things I did when I first started on board is I met with every single teacher and we, we talked about, you know, our vision for this year, our vision for five years, what our strengths are. And one of the teachers, one of the first teachers I talked to, talked about bringing fun back into school. He wasn't being wise and he wasn't saying we need to make school less rigorous by bringing in more fun, but we need to get the kids excited to be at the middle school. The middle school is a tough age, it's a tough group. There are things happening to their bodies that they, they don't understand, there are things, a lot of things going on. But we need to, and especially MCAS, we need to take an approach where we're celebrating it, we're not worrying about it because I, I think that's been, it's been, you know, we talk to the kids a lot about MCAS, but we don't celebrate MCAS, we don't get them excited about it, I think we need to take that approach with them. So, that's kind of where I wanna go. We also, I wanna work on, 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 you know, discipline, not that discipline is a problem, but the way we approach discipline with kids and how we approach, you know, one of my philosophies is if we can bring the fun to school and make it a place they wanna be, we're gonna see less discipline problems, we're gonna see more kids coming to school and we're gonna see these scores go up, so that's part of my approach. And finally, I wanna take a hard look at our schedule. I'm not sure our schedule maximizes the learning opportunities for our kids. So, that's, that's not a this-year goal, that's not a next-year goal, well, maybe it's a next-year goal, but it's a, it's a goal, it's something we wanna look at, so that's kind of where we're at with, with the middle school.
Chair, please. Uh, I, I, I just wanna say, upfront, having sat here for a while now, one of the concerns that I constantly had with the middle school was that we would, you know, everything sort of focused on, okay, these are the areas we did poorly and then these are the areas that we wanna correct. But yet, I would also hear, you know, this, this is a difficult age for kids, the MCAS test is too long. Kids get bored and tired by the end and don't follow through with the exam. Some are turning in blank pages and not wanting to be a part of the exam. And so, again, it goes to the culture idea, which is if the culture is that MCAS is fun and exciting and helps us, then it's a different ballgame and people look at it differently. So, I appreciate, this is the first time I've heard anyone say, we're gonna look at the culture of the building all around. And I also appreciate the idea of putting fun back in school because if you work, go to school or do anything in a fun environment, and I agree with you, it's not being flip or anything like that, if you're, if you're having fun, chances are you wanna stay, you wanna be here, you wanna be involved and chances are you don't, not, you don't wanna miss school. You wanna come every single day and I think that's really important, so I appreciate you saying that and that, that was great to hear.
Thank you.
Chair? Yes.
Absolutely. Celebrate MCAS, make a party out of it. So much is, these high-stakes tests and the kids are now stressing, you know, oh my god, I got MCAS tomorrow, you know. Gotta make it fun and, and then it goes into the PSATs, I, I went through that in my own household and I'm like, don't worry about it, no big deal, just go, just take it, enjoy it.
Right.
Don't worry about it, it's not a big deal and that's the, the problem is everything is so, oh my god. So, I love that you just said what you said about celebrate MCAS and sometimes the test isn't about what's going, that, that educational piece that's in, like that number one plus one, it's about the rest of it and that is, oh.
Well, part, part of, I had a parent talk to me about it and she was telling me her child got so anxious and so worried and, and what we would do in the past is we'd have an assembly and we'd tell the kids and the, the kids know the test is important. They don't, they don't need it anymore hammered in, you know, if we can, you know, celebrate it, let's, let's, let's have fun with it, you know, you do, as long as you do your best, that's all you can do and the numbers will take, I don't wanna say the numbers will take care of themselves, they gotta put in the work. But there's a way to handle, way to, to celebrate the test, so I appreciate you saying that, thank you.
I also wanna point out too, I, I think, when we talk about MCAS being a high-stake test, it's really a high-stake test for two groups. It's a high-stake test for the tenth graders because that determines whether or not they can graduate. And it's a high-stake test for administrators and the superintendent because if your school does really, really poorly, they can hurt your licensure. And, and so, it, it's not a high-stakes test to a first and second grader or a third and fourth grader or a fifth or, all the way up to tenth grade.
I'll also, it's a high-stake test for our teachers.
Yeah, I agree, I, I agree too and that's what I was gonna say. And I just think that it's, you know, in being in this district and, you know, I try to again and again point out to everybody, you know, we go through this, we go through numbers and we look at what the numbers are. But the fact of the matter is, in my mind, the number that matters is at the tenth grade. And consistently, over and over and over again, anyone who doesn't graduate from Middle Bar High School is not graduating because they can't pass MCAS. They're graduating because they didn't finish with English or, you know, ran, ran out of time or didn't do something or just decided I wasn't gonna participate in my senior year. It isn't about MCAS and so, you know, I think that's important to go over and over again. And then when we look at the numbers of the kids who are in trouble at tenth grade, like this year, I think it turned out that it was about, it's about three kids. And so, it's working with three kids to make sure that they have the opportunity to get it right over the next two years to be able to do, so, I appreciate it. Yes.
Thank you. So, I just kinda wanna give you some positive feedback because I have a student at the middle school and he hates school and it's like heartbreaking for me. But he, since coming into the middle school, he loves it. So, as, as much as he doesn't wanna offer up information, if I ask him a question, he's very excited. He learned all about imagery today and he couldn't tell me to, wait to tell me the story that he was writing in English and so you're definitely making improvements with the culture, so thank you.
Thank you.
One is, speaking on the culture of the teachers, I think there's high stakes for the teachers too and I've, I've heard stories about teachers getting upset at classes because a certain class didn't do well on the MCAS test and, you know, my, my, my children were kind of like, the teacher said this and I think if the teachers can convey, let's just take it easy and do the best we can, then I think that's a better, I think there is that trap that the teachers might get into feeling anxious about it and that's gonna translate to how they deal with the kids. So, I like that idea of thinking about the culture, I think it's a good top-down, you know, like if you set a, if you set the tone, it's gonna, it's gonna translate down. The second one is, being a science teacher, I've always been kind of wondering about the science end of things. I taught middle school science for two years and I, I just get the feeling that because math and ELA are so heavily tested throughout all the grades, I think science tends to be that back-burner topic. But then until it gets to eighth grade, then it's like, oh my god, we gotta do.
Right.
We gotta do science now. And the fifth grade, is that the two, fifth and eighth?
Right.
So, I mean, I guess I would like to see, I, I appreciate the review in eighth grade, but it's like, almost like what can we do in sixth and seventh grade that reinf forces science? Even though you're not testing MCAS, it's still important because eventually, so what, what's, any ideas on that topic?
To be honest with you, I haven't thought about it, but I will. And I will, you know, I'll talk with our, our science teachers and, and our science lead and, and see what we can do to reinvigorate the sixth and seventh grade. So, they are thinking about, you know, getting ready for the MCAS in the eighth grade.
Right.
I mean, just an example, when I was in sixth grade in another district, my science kids were getting pulled out to prep for the MCAS for math and I'm just like, I'm losing two weeks of science time.
Right.
Because they need extra time in math because of the MCAS, so it just seems like, you know, you're just robbing one Peter to play.
Right.
Play ball, you know.
Right.
So, that's just something I've seen personally, I think I've heard it, that maybe, just kind of realign it so that science is important all the, on the off-years.
Yep.
If there are no other comments or questions for Mr. Thomas, we'll move on to Mr. Brannigan in Middle Bar High School. Mr. Brannigan.
I'm really excited to share with you our data for tonight. Yeah, I'll say that it's an amazing thing when you actually have curriculum in place that is working and you can refine it and revisit it and not have a curriculum that is disjointed that when you look at actually what we're able to do in a curriculum that is in place and to be able to make those changes as needed, it's a game changer really in terms of what we're able to do. You'll notice in the strengths for the high school, in English, we were at ninety-five percent advanced proficient, which we're incredibly proud of. Out of the forty-two standards, thirty-five of them were above the state average. We're really proud of that growth over time. One of the areas that we found to be significant this year in particular, that the English department was putting a tremendous amount of energy in, was reading comprehension. The writing piece for us historically has already, has always been pretty good. It was that reading comprehension where our students were really getting tripped up. And by putting the energy in all of the English classes that they've done in, because of this, the changes in the curriculum that they've done, it's been a game changer really in being able to really hone in on, on reading comprehension. And they've done it through different passages, through plays and through poetry and through excerpts from novels and things like that. So, they've completely brought in different aspects of literature for students to be able to extrapolate, to then be able to do the work they need to do with those questions. So, that was something that jumped off the page when we were going through that data. In English, they exceeded all learning targets for all students, which was really interesting because we have done for the last three years longitudinal studies of every ninth grader coming into the building, of really looking at their MCAS data over their history. And that when we looked at our, our population of students, many of them are in our year-long experience classes, that many of these students had, had never seen a proficiency rating on an MCAS test before. So, we were finding the fact that in this year's cohort, that in English in particular, that we were finding that almost every single student was in proficient, which was really quite exciting for us because when you looked at that history for them, to finally have them the ability to be able to see the fruits of their labor was really quite awesome. Games in particular, we really have done a lot with paired texts because we're finding more and more on the MCAS tests that they will give them a excerpt from a play and an excerpt from a poem and they will be asked to read both of those and then answer questions that intertwine those two pieces of literature together. And that, that has been something that we realized the students could not do or, or really do it with a lot of confidence. And they started to really do that in the English classes, which we found that because they were able to do that paired text with very different aspects of pieces of literature and to be able to actually have them understand what they were reading and pulling that out. The English department had created what was called a rationale sheet, which when every time they were answering a multiple choice question with those paired texts, they had to rationalize why they were getting that answer. So, it was helping them really unpack their reading and unpack the meaning of the questions, but also the, the, the pieces that they were getting in the class. It's important to note that every time we've had another data point, so in August when the scores came out, because the English department is in the stage three of their curriculum, that they're able to make changes as they go. curriculum, that they're able to make changes as they go. So it's not looking at a curriculum that, well, we'll look at it next summer, because that's what you would do in a curriculum. Because they're in the review, they're in the revising process, in the revisiting of it, they're able to make changes as they're going, to ensure the fact that those standards are being met as well, which was quite, quite great. We were incredibly excited by math. Just to give you a little bit of a sense of that, in math, last year, a year ago, I said that we had 76% of our kids in advanced proficient, and this year we're at 88%. Last year, in 2017, we had 22 questions, 22 standards that were above the state average, 20 were below. And this year, if you noticed the fact, out of the 42 standards that were tested, 32 of them were above the state average, which we were incredibly, incredibly proud of. They exceeded learning targets for all students. And one of the things that was really quite interesting is that we had gone through the data pieces, and things that they really jumped off the plate was exponential functions, their questions with volume, and really their writing of equations. That writing in math is starting to become something that we're seeing the fruit of that labor a little bit too, because you're seeing that in their responses in math. The curriculum revisions that were to include that exponential functions, the ability in geometry to begin getting students to think backwards, was lends to that question that Mr. Gene Avon had asked earlier, about kind of that whole concept of taking a problem that has been completed for them, and how do you work backwards from that as well? Including a focus on the contextual situations in Algebra I and Geometry, the curriculum revisions to focus on quadratic equations in Algebra I. There has been a significant inclusion of focus on statistics, which for, for years we were as weak as could be, no longer. And really, the engagement of technology in math. So with the online quizzes, cahoots in measurement, and the one-to-one tablets in Schoology and things like that, has been a real opportunity for us to keep that engagement going as well. And in biology, we were really quite excited, because a year ago we were at 74%, and this year we're at 85% advanced proficient. So if you look at the STEM subjects, there has been significant growth in those areas, with a unbelievable commitment of the faculty, and of course, with the leadership of Dr. Gates. Out of the 45 standards in math, excuse me, in biology, 23 were above the state average. But what's interesting to note is I had sat with the Science Department Chair, and we went through the 22 questions that we were below. And what's interesting is, is out of the 22 of them, the majority of them, we were right under the state. So there was certain questions, we'll explain in the next slide, that we really were, we gotta put some focus in these areas. And what's nice is, is that how, I think for all of our schools, the evolution of, we were at a point where, where do you begin? And now the ability for us to really hone in and say, alright folks, here's the target this year, is really quite great. We noticed the fact that out of where we really took some significant jumps, was in anatomy and physiology standards, as well as genetics. And we had a noticeable improvement in our subgroups, namely our students with disabilities in that area of biology. So we're really quite excited by that. And the opportunities for growth, it's interesting, I wanted to make sure I pointed this out to the committee and the community, because we're still trying to get a handle on why this is. For the English department, as you'll know, just a moment ago, I said they exceeded their learning targets. But yet, we had a decline in students with disabilities, which has really been stumping us, because when you look at the data points, that should not be the case. Dr. Gates and I sat down the other day and tried to really unpack, to see, figure out why that decline is there, and we cannot figure it out. So more to come on that, but I wanted to make sure for you to know, as the committee, I don't have an answer for it, because when you look at the scores of that cohort of students, they're not, there hasn't been a decline. So we need to go back deeper and to figure out why that is. But it's not something that's jumping off the page to us to say, alright, now we know why that is, because it doesn't present itself to show that. And the other thing is, is really just the continuation of that paired text. One of the things that we're noticing, which I think you hear the trend of this throughout the presentation this evening, is the engagement of technology. What we find at the high school is that you have a whole population of student who's grown up on a paper and pencil exam. So what we're finding is, is that even though that our students have the one-to-one, their engagement is much different. Their ability to engage and to read the text on the screen is very difficult for them. And what we started to do in the beginnings, because note that this year is our English and Math MCAS will be on the computer as well, to join the other schools. We took our midterm exams, and the paired texts that these students were given in the exam, we printed them out and gave the students those texts ahead of time. So they could do the annotations on paper as they're very much used to. And then when they took the exam, we had the text in front of them with the computer, so they were then reading to get on the screen, what the annotation's already done. And now it's beginning the transition of, how do you go from the paper that they're very used to, to now be able to read on the screen and do the annotations on the screen? That's gonna be a shift in itself. So as everyone has been talking just about the, the kind of, the focus on their ability to use it, at the high school, it's been able to shift the monkey a lot more for them to be able to go from that pen and paper that they're very used to, to now engage in an online platform. But that paired text piece is something you will see consistently in grades nine and 10, because that is an area that we need to continue to do. In math, there were three areas that really jumped off the page for the math department. The expansion of vocabulary, and it's really just taking the vocabulary words that they're using in math, and really working it into their just typical vocabulary in a class. And what we're finding is, is the fact that more that they're able to do that, they can then transfer that into a question, to be able to unpack it, to be able to find solution. The backward solving problem techniques, we found on this year's MCAS test, that if you were to give a student a problem, they could solve the problem without a, without an issue. Where we were finding that they really struggled, was the fact on the MCAS test, they were giving students the whole problem already done, and having the students explain how they got, how the answer was created. And that really stumped them. So now it's that whole ability, that backward solving technique for them, to be able to figure out, how do you get to the end of the game anyway? And really, the test-taking strategies as well. The use of intentional use of vocabulary with our, with the students, things like additive inverse and multiplicative inverse, that continue to include problems in geometry that require students to think backwards. So it's really just the mindfulness, the engagement, the strategy and the planning that are done within the department as well, in, by, in math. In science, there's continued growth of the subgroups, namely the students with disabilities. Although we had increased, it is still an area, because of the incredibly high level of vocabulary involved in biology, it is really a challenge to be able to find those entry points in some way. So that is an ongoing piece that we're looking at. It is interesting though, that when we were looking at the areas that we needed to really focus on, there were three areas that jumped right off the page. The analyzing of diagrams, charts, and graphs. If the students were given a multiple choice questions, where they had to re, be able to give a domain, or some sort of vocabulary word, in many ways, they were able to do that. But when they were asked to analyze a chart, or a graph, or a diagram of some way, they could not do it. So now that has become the target in the ninth grade, to really make sure that those students are able to do that. It's also important to note, as we're unpacking the standards, the biology exam is in transition, because this February, we will engage the first cohort of the ninth grade in their biology MCAS tests. And this is the last year of the old standards of the test. In June of 2019, and in February of 2020, it will be a split test, meaning there'll be some sampling of the old standards, and some sampling of the new standards. And by June of 2020, it will be the complete new standards. So this is a department that is in flux a little bit as well, of trying to really master the old standards, but at the same at the time infusing the new ones as well. And really, the next steps of really just an important part, is really the collaborative meetings with English, math, and science. For a long time at the high school, we were doing everything really in isolation. The math worked with math, English did English, and science did science. And now we're at a point where we did it backwards. So we had the three content areas come together, and we really unpacked our data together, to kinda see, are there trends that you're finding in English that could be complementary in math, that could be complementary in science? Or is there a skill that is truly isolated in one content area? And once we did that, we were able to go back to the content areas and have them do their, through Common Planning, and their own kind of work as well, of unpacking their standards as well. And now the continuation of doing that. The curriculum work that needs to continue at all levels, albeit, you have a department like English that is in stage three, and they're maintaining, and they're revising, it's a constant work. So just the continuation of that. In math in particular, we're now at a point, looking at our data, that our math strategies program now needs to have a good look at, to see what changes can be made with that. So more to come with that. How do we engage the math strategies one, two, and three program? And really, what kind of activities are we doing, but also what standards are we trying to engage them in? And this is also coming, it's important to note, that Vicky Miles, the math department head, was just named, actually, on Friday of last week, to a member of the Grade 10 Mathematics Assessment Development Committee. So she will be literally on the front line of creating the 10th, Grade 10 Math Test. So part of this is, is with the work she's done on the Grade 7 curriculum, on the committee that she's worked with, the DESE, is really now with our, with our scores and the analysis of our standards. And now the ability to go back and really look at that strategies class, and really what we're doing with that. Really, a big note up here, is really the review of the year-long classes. It's important for you to note the fact that this cohort of students in Grade 11 is the first year of that two-year continuum of everyday classes for those students, and we really found great success with them. We have nothing to compare it to, because this was the standalone year of that group. However, it became really apparent that we need to have a much deeper conversation about whether or not everyone should be in a year-long experience as well, and how do you potentially expand that for ninth graders in particular? Moving advanced ratings to ELA, in ELA in math, to advanced, how far it's come. In biology, really the navigating of their, of their changes in their standards and complementing that. And really, just for us, which I think is just a complement of the other three schools, is really just our engagement of online assessment. We have been using Edgelastic as well as the middle school, and that has been a nice opportunity for us to engage students. But it's really about how we must continue to, in this area of engaging students with online teaching, learning, and assessment, to make sure the fact, when we get to these high-stakes assessments online, that our students are confident, but also that our teachers are confident as well, in being able to navigate those experiences. And just the last slide I wanted to share with you, I just thought it was important for, because this is where this graduation, it's based on graduation, we felt it was important for you to see just the growth over time in the 10th grade. Looking at advanced proficient ratings in 2012, to where they are now in 2018, and we just thought it's a testament to the faculty of those content areas in particular, of just their commitment to making sure that they could provide an unbelievable experience for students, to make sure they could find success. Questions?
The last thing I want to say to all of you, I really appreciate the fact that, having served on a previous committee when MCAS were started, I think a lot of you will appreciate this, we would go through this conversation mid-year, and then sort of couldn't do anything until we got to the summertime. And that the summertime essentially worked on the previous year's MCAS, knowing that we had just taken MCAS again, and not knowing what those results were. So it's, it's fantastic to see you adapt and to fly, both here and in what happens in the classroom, and also, you know, what happens in school improvement plans too. I think that's the other thing, you know, there are living documents that you guys look at, and also adapt as the year goes on to say, okay, I'm gonna focus on this, this, or this, because of what happened in the MCAS, so I really appreciate that. I know there's still some places, because I just sat through a conference, that people were like, what do you mean you're gonna have this conversation this, this month? And I'm like, well, we're gonna have the conversation about MCAS and what we can do this year. And they're like, no, we have the conversation about MCAS in May, for the previous years, and talk about what the administrators are gonna do over the summertime. I'm like, oh, that's nice. I used to live through that, now I don't have to anymore. So, thank you very much, this means a lot. And I think it means a lot for the district, and a lot of people don't realize it that way.
Brian?
I appreciate, I appreciate that they come here together, as well, working, working together, and Mr. Thomas making the comment about how he can ask questions to anyone, and they're getting back to him, and that's just great to see everyone working together, because that's how we move forward. I say we move forward, we continue to move forward, because we are moving forward. Looking at the, the high school piece with that expansion of vocabulary, and I briefly talked to Paul about it earlier, and I was thinking about it, and I've been thinking about it, and I was thinking about how, is it, is it something that, I know there was a real strong vocabulary piece to 10th grade geometry class that I was working with, and I appreciate the amount that was in there. Is that, is that across the board? Do we see that level across the board of that much rigor in the vocabulary? Or, I, I might be wording it, I'm looking over here for a reason, if I could?
I can't speak to anything that's on the geometry.
Yeah, okay. And the, and the reason why is, I, I found that, and I'm doing it right now with a, with an eighth grader, and I'm trying to go back to the vocabulary, I don't know what they are, I know what they mean, and I know what they're supposed to do with these, these alternate interior angles and all that stuff, I'm not using the right vocabulary. But if that's a, you know, how can we, is it something that we should be looking at at the middle school, working on that vocabulary, so when they get up to the high school, it's just reinforcement at that point? But that's why with you guys all sitting together, you're hearing it together, and Greg, you might have something that clicks in your mind, saying, hey, maybe I can mention something over here. So, that vocabulary piece, because I hate vocabulary being the downfall of math, because to me, math is absolute, but, but I can see why it is. And then that backward piece, I appreciate you touching upon it, because it's, it's, it's more logic thinking is what they're trying to test you on, not just how to get an answer, it's that logic piece, and I see why they're doing it, because we need that. But being told not to think, told to regurgitate in grade school, but not at high school, so I do appreciate, and I appreciate the honesty in looking at this stuff, is, it's, it's tough to say to some, you know, but that's your job, and I appreciate that you're willing to do it, just like, you have to, if not, you never get better. And I do love these, these, this growth since 2012, I really appreciate that, that last slide, because it's a testament coming up throughout. It's not, no offense, Paul, it's not just the high school, it's everybody.
No, and that's why we wanted to put it there, because there is history with these students that is, you know, many schools makes it happen. So we thought that it was important to have that final slide of just, that, you know, there were years here that it has been a lot of people in the mix of creating a village for these students, so.
Thank you.
I think another piece to, is the creation of, Mr. Lynch having the creation of the data team, the vertical data teams that we have now is, I mean, it, we had a conversation, and Paul is looking at us, saying, we have the same problems at the high school as a complex does. We, we didn't know. And sitting with our colleagues at the leadership of, of Mr. Lynch, and really looking at the data as a district, not just as elementary, middle, and high, has been so valuable, and we're gonna continue that work, so it's, it's so important for us to do that.
The tables also extended.
To the PBS director, and the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. We have the early childhood principals part of that team, the Director of Business Finance is part of that team, so we're all part of that, and the Director of Technology is part of that team, so we're all part of that administrative team, looking at the big picture, and that's important, to get a look at the big picture.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it. Next item on my agenda is the October 1st certified enrollment. That did not make your package, that is, the time for certification was extended, and we will hopefully definitely have that for the November 29th meeting, I apologize, my apologies for that. With regard to Thanksgiving week, we just want to remind everyone at home that next week is a two-day week, Monday and Tuesday, and that the Thanksgiving holiday for Middleborough includes a full day off for school on Wednesdays. So for those folks watching at home, Wednesday is a full day of, of home, not school. It's not a release day, it is, it begins the vacation or the Thanksgiving break, I will, I will say. So just a reminder for folks at home, that, that break, it's on the line, notification went home, and hopefully, or has gone home, or will go home, to let folks know that, that this is a full day off Wednesday, November 21st, I believe, right?
Anyone is looking for anything to do Thanksgiving morning, they can drive over to Carver and watch Thanksgiving.
Absolutely, on there, Carver has a new field, correct, Brian? The new athletic director's here, and they have a new field that, I believe, just opened three, three weeks ago. So I was talking to the superintendent from Carver today, at a Reed's Board of Directors meeting, and he's excited about having Middleborough visit. It's always a big day, so we, we travel well, generally, and especially on Thanksgivings, so looking forward to that, so. And lots going on in all the schools with regard to food drives, and pep rallies, and everything else that's going on during Thanksgiving week, so tune in to your, your individual school, websites, et cetera, and mailings that may come home. Next up is the fall sports season update, and I've invited Ryan and Sylvia, the athletic director, to come on down and sort of give us a summary, we do have one more fall sport... director, to come on down and sort of give us a summary, we do have one more fall sport entity, the chance to occur, which is the Thanksgiving game, but other than that, we've had a, a season basically wrap up here with a lot of successes, and some challenges, and some opportunities for growth. But, welcome, Ryan, and, and go right ahead.
All right. Thanks for inviting me, I don't have a SWOT analysis on the fall season, but I have, I have an update for you. Just kind of start with some statistics of, of kind of participation numbers and things like that. With the Nichols Middle School, we had 140, 114 student athletes on five teams, compete in 57 events. For the high school, we had 327 student athletes on 18 different teams, 11 varsity, 7 sub-varsity, participate in 236 events, so overall, that was 441 students participating in athletics, up about 7% from last year, and 23 different teams in 293 events. So, I said it last year, I'll say it again, it's a dynamic department, there's a lot going on, sending buses out pretty much every day, all, all around the region, and, and it was an exciting year. Some notable achievements, I don't want to go through records of every team or anything like that, but we, what's interesting is last year we had two really high-level regional and state-level achievements with our cheerleading and, and football program, and this year it was kind of the, the flip side, where we had a much more well-rounded amount of success at the varsity level across all sports. We had only two of the 11 varsity teams with records below 500, so every, almost every team achieved a, a high-level success and qualified for postseason play. Most notably, I have a few bullet points here, field hockey qualified for the tournament for the first time, and all the records I could find in the file cabinets from, from back since 1989, and there's only graduating four seniors, so they got a nice team coming back for next year. Girls soccer qualified for the tournament for only the second time in school history, and finished with the first regular season winning record, and tied the most wins in school history with eight, tying the 86, 93, and 02 team, and there's only graduating three seniors, young team, they played a playoff game at Dayton Rehoboth in the first round, it was a tie game with two penalty kicks, and then went to a shootout after two, after a double overtime period, and, you know, questionable calls, we, we look back and could say that team, that team definitely could have won that game and advanced, and the Dayton Rehoboth team was still playing after that, so, it was a little bit of a frustrating day, but a lot of promise on a young girls soccer team. I, I learned a little bit of history about Middleboro Athletics from digging through some of these, some of these old record books. Volleyball also qualified for the tournament, advanced to the South Quarterfinal, they had to go on the road in the first round to play Norwell, who they'd already beaten twice, and, and beat them again a third time to advance to, to face three, the three seeds, Stoughton, and we had a, a great, we traveled well, like Mr. Lynch said, we had a, a whole load of kids in the, in the stands, I think we had more Middleboro kids at the Stoughton game than, than Stoughton. Unfortunately, we lost that game, 3-0, but every one of the games in the match was very close, could have kind of gone either way, so, that was exciting to reach the quarterfinal. And then, girls cross-country finished with the most single-season wins in school history with eight, at eight and two. The 1975 team was undefeated, 7-0, and Senior Abby Wager was undefeated in the league, and Player of the Year for the South Shore League, she didn't, she didn't lose a race from an individual standpoint all year long and set the course record, so a little shout out to Abby, having a great senior year.
Mr. Sylvia, I don't want to interrupt, but I would tell you that Abby Wager also won a award last week?
She was recognized at the MIA.
For sportsmanship?
Breakfast, breakfast of champions, I'm sorry, championship breakfast. Each league sends two individuals, male and female, up to the MIA to be recognized, and the way our, the South Shore League handles it is they send the individual league champion for boys and girls, so, we sent Abby up there, and she was recognized with her coaches, TJ Smith, a first-year head coach for us here, and then her assist, the assistant coach, Jackie Maybean. And just a few more, the, the kind of, the list kind of keeps going, golf had the best record in school history, at 11 and 5, finished second in the league, qualified for the sectional tournament, and, and they needed to defeat Norwell in the last match of the year to win the conference at Norwell, which in golf, it's a little difficult whenever you're playing the opponent's home course. So they, they lost a close match there, and unfortunately didn't win the conference, but a really successful season, and then obviously the unified basketball team with the, the 5-0 undefeated season was a huge success, so. Those are really the most kind of notable of the year, we did a lot of other things, tried some new things, I could stay up here all night and probably talk about the accomplishments of all of our teams, but we, we did talk earlier, a, a different, another school committee meeting about some things we changed around homecoming, we, we tried to involve more athletic teams in the homecoming events, not just about the football game, and that was a big success. We kind of joined together the principals' roundtable and the captains' council to form Club Us, which is a unified group, and Mr. Brannigan and I kind of figured out that it, it's difficult to get that group together as much as we'd like, because they're all involved in so many different things. We've had a meeting scheduled in October, and that was the night of the volleyball game, so, we're using our Google Classroom to communicate with that group as best we can, which is, which is working out well, so. Some other kind of initiatives that I just wanted to make note of, and, and I won't take too much more time here, because, because that's basically my report before we get to questions. One of my goals in 2017 was really to tighten down the athletics budget as much as I possibly could, so that we could really work within the restraints of the revolving account, and rely on those user fees and, and make sure that everything is balanced in that way, and we were able to do that and, and finish last year with a surplus, and what that did is it allowed all the fundraising that our booster club, the All Sports Boosters Association does throughout the year, to really be what it's supposed to be, and that's funds that when our coaches need something, or when our athletic department needs something that maybe isn't in the original budget, we can go to them and ask for it. And that's been a huge, a positive, huge positive for the, for the department, and, and it created a healthy bank account for the, the Boosters Association, and we're doing things like helping out with town facilities, upgrades, and maintenance, so that when we do go offline for the fields in a few months here and in the future, we can kind of lean on some other facilities in, in the community, because we're able to contribute. So that was working with the youth soccer program this fall, and, and then Nichols Middle School, which we've, we've helped to maintain those fields and get them up to, to par going forward. So that was, that was one thing I just wanted to make note of. And then, I mentioned previously about our live streaming of events, last year, we, we had a, a camera installed in the gym, we livestreamed almost every volleyball game this year automatically through the NFHS Network. People purchased subscriptions for a minimal fee, and they're able to watch anything going on in our gym that we schedule and we send to the network. That also included the first unified basketball game, and we'll continue to do it this winter with the, with the girls' basketball team, the boys' basketball team, and hopefully in the future, depending on the type of technology we get installed in the new facilities with the, with the school, so. School store has, has been up and running, and that, that'll continue, that closes this Sunday for delivery before December 20th. So, if you want to get your gear, your Sachem gear before the holidays, this is my advertisement, get on the website and, and click on the link right on the main page of the athletics site, and you can get your gear. It'll, it'll close Sunday, and then we'll reopen it again afterwards, but once we reopen it, that, the, the delivery will be after the holiday season, so, something to, to note there. We had a couple soccer games at Battis, that's been a good relationship, we kept that going for the second year in a row, two night games, which, both senior nights, which the soccer team appreciates, and, and it was a nice night for them. And that's, that's really all the bullet points I had for the fall. We have the awards night, we're, we're continuing with the all-sports awards night at the end of each season, and, and for the fall season, it's December 5th, at 6:30 PM, and we worked with the Key Club, I worked with Mr. Brannigan and the Key Club to, to organize that on the same night as Eat to Heat, which at first seemed a little overwhelming, they put on a dinner to raise money, but they have seedings at 5 o'clock, and then I believe again at, at 5:30. So we encouraged a lot of the athletic teams and their families to buy a ticket for Eat to Heat, support a good cause, and the, the Key Club has promised to get them in those early seedings, so they can go right from dinner up to the awards night, and we really didn't have too many conflicts with the student athletes, so. The nice thing about the awards night being all on one night altogether is, it's a no-charge event, we recognize every student athlete from Nichols Middle School all the way up through the high school, we do it in a way that we can recognize them up on the stage, and all their names are called, but we do it quickly, so it's over, you know, you're not there for more than, you know, an hour, 75 minutes, something like that. And then we have donated refreshments, you know, baked goods and things like that in the lobby, so. Went well last year, and we're, we're hoping to get a good turnout for, for December.
Any questions for Mr. Sylvia?
I just have a comment about the unified basketball, I think I went to the opening game, I believe I, okay. And I was just amazed at the culture and the atmosphere in that, I mean, it was a full house, and I, I have a, a good friend's son is on the team, he's autistic, and he made a couple baskets, and there were teams that came in from practicing, I don't know if they're soccer or whatever, but there was a bunch of athletes that had come in, and they were lining up around the, the other side of the, the court, and he started just high-fiving everybody on the side of the court, and I just looked at him, and he had a big smile on his face, so, really, I applaud you guys, everybody that set that up, I think it worked, was just awesome, so, thank you.
Ryan, I, I do want to thank you as a parent of an athlete. In the two years that you've taken over, there have been so many additions that have made the programs exciting, I mean, the idea of going to Battis Field for senior nights and, and things like that, the homecoming, essentially a jamboree, if you will, of the various teams that get to play was fantastic. I also think, you know, you really emphasized to the athletes that they have to be there for each other, and as Greg said about the unified teams, go, the kids, the football team walked off the field after practice and lined the gym to make sure that they were there for those kids, but more importantly than that, just the number of kids who are constantly traveling to, you know, the playoff games, to go there and be there as, really as teams, and making sure that younger members of teams who may not drive have rides, and they're going to Stoughton, and they're going to Rehoboth, that we went for the soccer, it was unbelievable, and that's a culture that you've really started, and you should be applauded for that, and so I want to say thank you. The one other thing that I want to point out, especially for the fall, that, you know, I said when we started the AP rally, that this is really the conversation about lasts with some of these kids, that's the last time those fields will be used for, as they're used currently, because the fields close come January, and they're not going to be used, and they're going to be rehabbed and, and reinvigorated, so for all the kids who walk away from their athletic careers there, you know, I really want them to know that, you know, they're the foundation of a brand-new high school, and they're the foundation of new fields, and they're the foundation of a new stadium. And I would also like to point out to the committee, because I think it's important as, as we're about to hit budget discussion, that there's, Ryan's going to need more money next year, because we're going to have to transport kids to other locations, we're going to have to move kids around, we're going to have to probably at times pay for some fields and field usage that we don't currently have to, and so, we all knew that going in, but next year's that first year that it sort of starts to hit home, and we have to be ready for it. So, thank you, Ryan.
Yes. I, I think that the way you brought that up was perfect, that, the last, because I, because I, when I was attending the, the track meets and I, the cross-country meets, and I saw Abby break the school record mid, early October, and then break it again, she broke it twice this year, which was awesome, set two personal bests for herself, which was phenomenal, I, I, I think everyone was excited, like, we all won, but it wasn't, but it was just a, it was a great thing to, her, just her face and everything, and she's like a machine out there when she runs, it's, it's amazing, because I was watching, when she comes across, she's just focused, and I just think that that's the focus that I try to explain to other people that run, that you have to have all the time, but, the other thing, which I just came from your previous meeting, which was the, the winter sports meeting, and when you talk about sportsmanship, and hands down, I think that that's one of the things that even some of the parents could utilize, because I was at the Dayton, I was over in Dayton, Rehoboth, that field, and man, some of the other team, ooh, I thought one of the parents were going to get carded themselves from, from the umpire, one time he looked at the parent and was like, but I, I, I don't, oh, okay, I was going to say, I don't see that as much in Middleboro, I think, I think you, you hammered that home a little bit, but I, I, I mean, other than that Super Bowl game that one call, I was, I was, everyone was irate at that point, but I think that you, you've been doing a pretty good job, if I, if I, just from the standpoint of what I've seen in my seven years out so far, and this is year two, that's it? I feel like you've been here long, longer than that. No, and it's a good way.
Four seasons, that's it.
Yeah, that's it, so, keep up the work, I, I think it's great, I, I'm looking forward to Unified Sports and other seasons at, at some point, so I hope that works out.
More questions? Thank you. Mr. Sylvia, I would do, would mention that Masba was mentioned this evening, their annual, the 10th annual Hall of Fame Dinner is Saturday night, this Saturday night, at the Boston Tavern, the Abigail Adams Room, tickets are available, there's a nice article in the Gazette tonight, Middleboro Gazette, on the event, and where you might buy tickets. If you're still interested, there's a number of teams, former individuals, supporters, the 2013 state championship baseball team will be inducted that evening, a friend of mine from high school, Daniel, Daniel Scuttevonne is being inducted, there's a number of, of people being inducted, so, it's always a great time, it's always a fun time, and hopefully there's still some tickets available, but if anyone's interested out there and would like to go to the Hall of Fame Dinner, please buy your tickets in advance, because there may not be any available at the door, so, and we thank, as always, the Middleboro Sports Boosters, and we thank the Middleboro Hockey Group also for, for everything that they do, as, as we look towards the winter.
The Masba will be having their mattress sale again, so keep your eyes out for the mattress sale, but also the height, the hockey group has, I think, February 2nd, they have their comedy night coming up.
It's February 1st.
It's February 1st, February 1st.
February 1st at the Elks and the mattress sales.
MiddleboroHockey.com.
Yeah, MiddleboroHockey.com, you can buy your tickets for the, the Mig Group, the Improv Night at the Elks, and the mattress sale is February 9th, and 10% of the population is always looking for a mattress, so hold off till February 9th, before you buy that mattress, buy it from, buy it from Masba. And what, I, I did want to say one more, one more thing, we're taking a group of students to the, because there's been so much posit, positive vibe around the unified team, we are taking a group of students to Gillette Stadium tomorrow on a field trip for the sportsmanship summit, and the group that's going up is the four partners that started that, that really kind of held that whole team together, and also our, our unofficial MVP, Josh, Josh Stambrook, he was kind of a leading scorer, and he's, he's making the trip up, too, with a couple other students from the fall sports program. And Middleboro is actually being recognized as a school with, on the sportsmanship honor roll from the 17, 18 school year from last year, and, and the State Association puts a ton of emphasis on not having any students disqualified from any athletic events for the entire season, and that's the only true criteria for being recognized as a school with, on the sportsmanship honor roll, so we were able to go through all of last year without a disqualification, and we do emphasize that with our coaches and, and teams, so, I was happy that, that we, we got that, and, so we'll, we'll head up there tomorrow with a group of students.
We should also, to, thank Mary for the work that she does, because there, she goes over and above, and, you know, helping our kids sort of even now, and for some of the kids in offseason before they start the, the new season, working with them, and making sure they're ready to go for winter sports, she does a fantastic job, and that's Mary Farley, who's our assistant to the athletic director.
And, and Mr. Chair, just one step further I'd go with, with, in terms of AV and media communications and getting the word out, Twitter has been great, but we've also had communications and getting the word out, Twitter has been great, but we've also had Sean Siciliano, who's in the back room, basically at almost every single event, taking pictures, posting them, making sure they get out there so that folks can see their children, their grandchildren, anywhere they wanted to go, but just by going to the Middleboro Education Television or the athletic site. So Sean's in the back room, but we thank Sean for his AV media, media communication that he does.
Both, both of them, it's actually unbelievable how willing they are to cater their schedule exactly to the athletic schedule and the school's schedule. And it's not even a question. If there's something going on, they're both there. And I'm, most of the time, I'm tagging along with them and that's, that's kind of the crew. So it's, it's, it's fun and they do a nice job.
Mr. Chair, next on my agenda, my report is the beginning of the discussion of the 2019, 2020 Middleboro Public Schools, School Calendar. This is an initial draft. There's some areas that we need to sort of look at in terms of the future. One being that we are going to be entering into negotiations with the Middleboro Education Association. The school committee will be doing that and we'll need to look at that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, if that's something that can be mutually agreed upon, if that's something that's going to continue or not continue. We also need to look, especially at the December holiday break. Christmas happens to fall on Wednesday, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. We have to look at that twenty-third. Are we going to go to school the twenty-third? Are we going to go twenty-third and half-day the twenty-fourth? Are we going to go through the next week and we go to Wednesday? Are we going to come back to Thursday and Friday? You know, you're talking about firing up five buildings and, and heat and et cetera. So some decisions have to be made. Where Christmas and New Year fall midweek, the most difficult decisions are made with regard to this calendar once every seven or eight or ten years. So just something to think about. I mean, initial discussions, initial ideas are certainly, need to be bantered about, but this is just throwing it out there. We'll have it on the agenda for the twenty-ninth again and...
I've actually given a lot of thought to this already. Just, just, just to throw out some ideas, ironically, the April vacation falls really nice for an extra-long April vacation because it's going to fall between the Good Friday and Patriots' Day. So it's going to be like a huge vacation week, which will be good for the seniors, maybe. The seniors going away when they do that. So if, they can, they can work around that, which is great, maybe. But when we talk about our half-day, I'm sorry, early release days before long weekends, have we ever run into any other problems with attendance on those or?
Attendance is okay.
It's okay? Then I, I think the idea of continuing with, with doing that, I think that works, works well for different, different people. I don't think that that was a problem. But when I was looking at that, that holiday break in December, it's, it's a tough one because the question, I had the same question, do you come back one, two, Thursday, Friday? Or do you just power through right up and, and power right up to the twenty-fourth, the half-day on the twenty-fourth and then not come back one, two, come back on the fifth of January? So the question is, do you want to let people travel on the twenty-first of December and come back on the second of January or not? So I think that that's the food.
Yep. Some difficult decisions.
That's a tricky, that's the tricky one that I was looking at and I didn't have an answer to that, but that was the real, and then I was looking at the fact that we actually get to start, the second of, the second of September is, I think it's, was it, second of, third of September is that would be considered the first day at school if we went the day after Memorial, Labor Day. But would get out somewhere on the fifteenth of Janu, of June if we did that. So I was kind of playing with the numbers without any snow days tonight. Oh, sorry. And then working with our full PDs, if we continue with our three PDs at the beginning, I was thinking about, you know how we have an early, we have, we have early release, six early release days? I know that some of the staff would like to get into their classroom early. Would that be something that we could play with? I don't know if that's something we can play with. I don't know. I haven't, I, I was trying to figure out a way to get the staff into their room early if, because they like to be able to set up their classroom, some of the, especially some of the new hires. But I don't know if that's something that we can play with at the beginning.
I would say, Mr. Givernoni, that a lot of them do that as a matter of course, as, as, as an educator, they want to get the, get in there, get it set up. And it really is a credit to, to the hard work of our teaching staff, there's no doubt about it.
That was what I was kind of playing with, looking at dates and stuff that really jumped out.
And I'd venture to say that, that almost one-hundred percent of elementary classrooms are set up before the beginning of the school year, before the beginning of professional development days.
Okay, thank you. That's just, I was just playing with it when I was going through it and looking at previous things.
I mean, I'd be interested in finding out for the December break if what other school systems are contemplating, you know, if you have any idea about other superintendents. My, my knee-jerk reaction would be as a parent, I think the Christmas holiday is probably the biggest, like, if, if families travel to see relatives or something, it's going to be for Christmas, not New Year's. So I would kind of lean toward the, getting that week off, the twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, and then have school start, like, maybe come back on the thirtieth. And then, because I just don't think New Year's is as big a holiday as Christmas. So my recommendation would almost be to take that week off.
And come back on December thirtieth, thirty-first and have the first off and then go to school on the second and third.
Yeah. That's just my knee-jerk reaction to that. Because I think the Christmas week, if people are traveling, they want to get out there before Christmas Eve. Reagan?
The only thing I'll say to that is this, and it's something to think about, if, if you take those two weeks off, okay, the week of Christmas off and the week of New Year's off, and not open the buildings those, those two weeks, if you will, it sort of sets up for the following year when it's going to be the, essentially the move-in to the new building.
Right.
And it gets people used to it for, for, for a year. Because I think if you're going to look at what we're going to have to do, it makes sense for two thousand and twenty for us to take the two full weeks off so that we could give custodial staff and every, everybody else the chance to move things into the new building. Because essentially Paul's going to close the building on, at some point in December and open it again after the New Year and have to be in a new building. We know a lot of newer things are going in, but we also know that a lot of, a lot of stuff is going to have to travel over. And so I think the two weeks gives us a better opportunity to do that and clearly gives the custodial crew a better opportunity. And so maybe if, you know, people get used to it this year, and it also is a piece for me about how we heat buildings and stuff like that and, and those type of things.
And I think when we look at two thousand and twenty-one, we also have to look at the what-ifs. What if we're not on schedule?
Yeah.
Do we need to have an option A and an option B schedule in case?
Yeah.
We need to look at, you know, something in February where we're a little bit, a month off or two months off or something like that. So hopefully that's not the case. Everything so far has gone along, but once you set shovel in the ground and, and we start dealing with weather and we start dealing with, you know, delays perhaps, we have to, hopefully we won't have those, but we need to...
September two thousand and twenty, Labor Day falls on the latest it can be. Labor Day falls on the seventh. So, so we're, we're losing time on Jan, on June of two thousand and twenty-one if we're not careful with our schedule. I've, because I was looking at that one as well, saying the same thing. Sounds crazy to be thinking about two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, but, but I, but I agree with, it would be nice to have two weeks off. It would put the last day of school at the seventeenth, potentially.
And this is a school committee decision, but I'm also going to vet it with the school administrative team to get their thoughts. So we have a meeting on the twenty-eighth and so we'll be discussing that also and I'll bring that input back.
Before you go, if I could just say something. It doesn't, I would prefer, if it's okay with the rest of the committee, not to bring it up on the twenty-ninth. And the reason is, we're about to hit Thanksgiving. I would prefer to wait till a December meeting to give the community more time to react and have conversations with us and with the principals and the superintendent. I think it's good that we're laying out, the potential exists that we could take two weeks off in December through January. And so that, I just wanted to say that. I don't, I, I don't think, given next week's the holiday and given next week is, we close, you know, on Tuesday and we're not open the rest of the week, that I think it makes more sense to wait until December so that gives people more time. Does that seem reasonable with everybody? Then, go ahead, Greg.
I was just going to say, I, I think we, we've always done the options, right? Option A, option B. I think you could probably just lay those both out to see what it does to the end of the year. I don't see much value in, like, if we take two weeks off this year, I don't see that, I mean, I don't really connect that to the following year. But I think in the, the next, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, yeah, we're probably going to start school earlier, just to get that leeway in the middle there. So if we need an extra week because of construction, we have it. So I, I think, yeah, we're probably definitely going to have to go before Labor Day the following year.
So we'll have it on the agenda for the December thirteenth meeting?
Yep.
For more discussion and we'll have input from administration as well as any parent out there that wants to provide any input to school committee or to myself. You're certainly welcome to do that.
So can I just, or?
Sure.
Okay. So I, I see three options right now from everything we talked. There's the going from the twenty-fourth to the second or something like that, like a week that straddles. There's the two full weeks off and then there's that one week of Christmas off. I think those are the three, in my view, the three viable options.
Well, just for that particular piece.
Right, just for that section.
I also maybe see a fourth option where you come back the second. So you take from the twenty-third off and then stay off and then kick back in a week and a half. But my question as to that flexibility, my thing, like, you, you have a lot of flexibility with the schedule because Labor Day is early. So that we do have this flexibility where we can talk about, we're talking about June fifteenth to June seventeenth. We're not talking June twenty-fifth to June twenty-seventh, which looks like maybe in two thousand and twenty-one, which may be the issue. When it comes to starting before Labor Day, is that a union issue, a school issue, a contract? Because I haven't been through.
I believe we, we have started before Labor Day as a district. It's something that we've moved to the last couple of years, you know, and...
Our contract allows for us to go back the week before, to start the, the week before Labor Day, the Monday before Labor Day, we could actually start, as the way it's currently written.
And, and Mr. Rowe, we have a hundred and eighty-four days to, to complete. So we have to get, it four professional development days in there somewhere. So what we've done is we've front-loaded them so that we have some consistency in workshops and two-day workshops and things such as that, that we can focus on. And then float that other professional development day. This year it was on Election Day, the previous year it was on the Friday before Martin Luther King Weekend. So we have to complete those hundred and eighty-four days, you know, with teachers, with students, you know, basically, well, hundred and eighty-four with teachers, a hundred and eighty with students. So somewhere we have a block of time that we have to put wherever it is. So that's why the advantage of, starting after Labor Day for students hasn't been, really been an issue because we've been able to get the three days in before and we're not asking the teachers to stay until July.
I just want to make sure that the teachers aren't losing that momentum. So if we're talking about splitting up a week where you're coming back during the holidays where kids are typically off as it is, now you're going to split the week in half or now you're going to come back for two days, it's, it's going to be a nightmare for teachers. And to gain that momentum back, coming back from break, it's, it's going to be a nightmare. So I just want to keep that in mind, too.
Can I also add to that, too? We just had a conversation about excessive absenteeism. And so if we come back the thirtieth of December, we know there's kids not coming back because they're away. And so that's going to sort of start us in a bad position. And so that's why I'm concerned about that particular piece. I understand, like you said, maybe we look at coming back after January first and those type of things, but I still think you're going to end up losing kids where it's tied up. And then we're back to the piece where, you know, it's, it's that sort of thing, well, does, you know, does two days really mean a lot? You know, what are they really going to miss? It's, you know, they're just getting back from break and, and, you know, and so I'm concerned about that piece, too. I also think that we've also had, and what we've heard from parents, and I think Brian will attest to this, that we've always done it after Labor Day because we heard from parents that they would prefer to go after Labor Day. What we've sort of said to them has always been, we give them as much notice as we possibly can. And so that's why we tried to do it in December for the previous year. The other thing that we've tried to emphasize to people, and Brian just mentioned it, this season he's had more students involved in athletics. Those students start two weeks before school starts anyways, so if you're a parent of an athlete, you can't go anyplace anyways because your, your, your kids are already involved, they got to go to tryouts and they got to go to open, you know, the way, when everything opens up. So it's not like you can, you're going to use that time anyways, too. So it's, yes.
If we could pull the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen calendar, that was the last time this happened, with the midweek Wednesday, Christmas, I believe. So if we could maybe take a look at what we did then. I remember this discussion was a lengthy discussion because of what we were doing and, and it'd be nice to know what we did there. I, I just tried to look in my Dropbox. I don't, I don't go back that far. I only go back to the beginning of, the end of two thousand and thirteen, my Dropbox are...
Hopefully we have that.
Can I just ask, Mr. Lynch, I know you sent out, you showed a newsletter to the community, to parents. Would it be possible for, on the next newsletter, you to put this issue in it? The idea of what we're going to do over Christmas, Christmas break for next year so that at least people have the opportunity to weigh in in some fashion if they want to? That'd be great. Thank you. Any other further comment or? But it's always good to start early.
And I'd like to hear like what the ministers, what the principals think.
Yeah. Some people are shaking their heads at various things as we're talking, so.
No, Mr. Chair, I think the comment that we usually get is, you guys never even talked about the calendar. And you just, you just gave it to us the week before school and said you're going back.
Happens all the time. Mr. Lynch, anything else?
I complete my report.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is MSBA update, and so I will again turn that over to Mr. Lynch since I missed the last meeting because I actually had to work.
Well, Mr. Jev was there, Mr. Givernoni was there also.
Oh, okay.
I did not make it. I was, I was, I was watching it streaming live up in Lawrence, when I was up in Lawrence.
Okay, well, the one hundred percent...
I meant the one yesterday.
I did watch it, though.
Yeah, we had a working group meeting yesterday, but the MSBA, the, excuse me, the submission to MSBA, the one hundred percent submission was submitted on time, was received on time, and they're preparing their remarks to head back to us, to send back to us. Much more detailed, obviously ten more percent detailed, but they're working on estimators now, working on some well work that the Pierce Trustees is paying for up at the high school, the Nichols Middle School. They did find an adequate well at Nichols and they're still working on, on, on some high school sites, so they continue to be a little bit frustrated with that. We've had some, some dousing going on and all kinds of issues. So right now, the, the, sort of the, the vector technology, finding exactly where it's supposed to be, didn't quite work out well. So that's what's going on with actually the trucks that you might see on the, on the field. But other than that, the hundred percent submission went in, December twelfth, thirteenth, they go out to bid and they come back and then the, again, February fifteenth is the final approval and then February eighteenth is a notice to proceed. So that's when the fences will go up, that's when we lose the track in the tennis courts and that's when we, you know, the road comes in from Wood Street and, and that's where we begin the, the begin.
Chair?
Yes.
I was talking with Rob DeRozio, who's the chairman of that committee, because I was asking some questions, and he was saying that this, this, even though it's a hundred percent plan, they're being scrutinized pretty tough by our OPM, looking at, looking at our architects' previous jobs and where questions came up. And they're really addressing that right now as well, which I think is awesome, that our OPMs are phenomenal on this, even in engaging some other architects to look, you know, almost peer-review it. Because what happens is you stare at something for two years, you see nothing, you see a blur at this point. It happens with any, anything you do in life. So it's great to have a fresh set of eyes and we're also talking about scheduling some of that, some of that phasing and the question of possibly easing up on some of that phasing so as to not make it as expensive, because sometimes if you try to do it and cram it in quickly... to do it and cram it in quickly, there's a saying, you can have a good, fast, or cheap pick, too. And if you want it good and fast, it's not gonna be cheap, so.
Yeah, and, and MSBA takes a serious look at it, but also we have a commissioning agent that's part of the process.
Yeah, which is awesome.
Hired by MSBA, Colliers International, who's another design firm, who comes in and does that real deep dive, deep look into the plans. So.
I think it's great that, like I said, I missed, I missed that last meeting, but I did catch it, though, on the, the whole discussion of the turf field, and that, how the turf field, because using science to be able to reduce concussions by the, by the speed at which it bounces back, that was really cool. Like I said, I was watching it. And to use that slow bounce back to reduce concussions versus a regular grass field, which is, is, has a higher incidence of concussion.
Yeah. And David Warner, Warner and Associates is the, the engineer who's dealing with the outside, the exterior. And he's very, very comprehensive, and his report at that meeting was, was really outstanding. And, and very, I'm medically based, talking about a lot of research that's going on at BU with regard to concussions and CTE, and that extra padding that we are gonna have at that field, that other fields don't have. It's, it's breaking technology, it's, so it's, it's, it was good. I actually enjoyed that, that presentation.
That was awesome.
Any questions about the update? We, so we will be moving towards a contractor pretty soon, and very excited. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. I just wanna give everyone a brief update at MAS, MASC, MASIS Conference that I went to. I will say this, myself and the school committee members from Cape Cod Tech were loved by all the contractors at there, because we're the next two projects out to bid for the state. Cape Cod Tech has put out their bid for, for their new high school. And that everyone was more than happy to sit down and have conversations with us about what we were looking for. So it was, it was pretty interesting. I had a really good time at the conference, learned a lot, picked up various pieces. I will tell everyone that all the resolutions passed, except for the resolution on the busing for regional transfer school districts, which I thought would be pretty much a easy one to pass, but it was not. It was sent back to committee to relook at. The most controversial and the biggest, the lengthiest debate was over the sports gambling. Because there was a, a large contingent that did not want the schools associated with sports wagering. So I understood that it passed, but, but only by a few votes. And so that was, that was an interesting discussion. So it was very interesting, had a good time. I, obviously, I, as I said before, I always recommend that committee to everybody, the, the convention to everybody, and those who can go, glad. We also did have a conversation. I, I met with the director, and we had a conversation with a group of us about how to get more participation. And one of the things we talked about was looking at the ideas of moving in on a weekend and rotating the location, because I think a lot of the western part of the state misses out, because they, you know, can't come to the Cape all the time. And then, you know, as we pointed out, there's a significant number of school committee members across the state that are teachers. And it's difficult for them to take time off, especially a Wednesday through Saturday. So it, it might make more sense for a Friday through a Sunday, or something like that. Some of the conferences, the national conference, for example, is a Friday through a Sunday, because it, it works out better for that. So that was some of the conversations we had. Does anyone have any questions about that? The two other things, we're still working on operating protocols, and I'm gonna talk to Megan tonight about a subcommittee meeting for policy. Other than that, we have a new hire down from the middle school, and a donation from Chappelle Prints for the high school. The only other thing I wanted to add, just so everyone knows, and we haven't really talked about it, is Sunday, this coming Sunday is the open house for the opening of the new police station. And the superintendent and I, and some of the principals were invited to the opening, a walkthrough on Saturday at the new, the new principal, the new police station. So we'll be attending that to take the initial walkthrough and go from there. Anyone else have anything they wanna bring up or mention before we close this out tonight? Seeing no one, a chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
To hear a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much.